Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting for July 15, 2020. For the record, council members Williamson, Rule, Darling, McAllister, and Groth are present. Councilman Spiero is absent. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Are there any announcements from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of announcements tonight. First, we've received a number of emails from city residents who had questions about, given our limited seating that we have here in council chambers with social distancing requirements. We've had several requests for could we give priority for seating in council chambers to city residents. And our city attorney, Andy Domon, and I had a conversation about this a couple of days ago, and I'm going to hand it over to Andy to kind of speak to you and the council about this issue and just generally about meeting structure and access to meetings. So.
Thank you, Jennifer. First, I wanted to address the issue of whether the council and the mayor could restrict access to open meetings. And open meeting law is governed by Title 74, Chapter 2 of the Idaho Code. And it's fairly specific and it's very broad. It says, "The policy of the state of Idaho is that the formation of public policy is a public business and shall not be conducted in secret." The statutes go on to say that all meetings of a governing body, such as the council and mayor, shall be open to the public and all persons shall be permitted to attend unless there's some exception under the Act, such as for executive sessions. The statute is very clear. There's no mechanism for restricting access to a public meeting from anyone who wishes to attend, whether they be a resident, a business owner, someone from the community, or someone maybe not even connected with the city whatsoever. But all individuals, all persons are entitled to attend a public meeting. There's no restrictions that can be placed on that. Now, my recommendation is that restricting access to only residents could be construed as a violation of that Act. And I would recommend to you that you keep your meetings open to all members of the public. Now, we do realize that during these very strange times, dealing with the COVID virus, that we've had to take reasonable accommodations in order to protect the health and safety of the folks that do come to our meetings. And I think the staff and the council and the mayor have taken appropriate steps. We've provided for social distancing. We've provided for face masks, which most of the staff are wearing this evening. And we also provided for opportunities for people to attend meetings vicariously through Zoom or otherwise. So we do have mechanisms to keep our meetings open. But again, they are open to all members of the public. To restrict them otherwise, I think, could be construed as a violation of the Act. Along those same lines, we've had discussions. We've had comments about what constitutes or what are the restrictions or the guidelines for public forums. And I want to remind the council of what has transpired in previous council meetings and what guidelines we have under the law. First, the mayor and the city council, long before any of you all were here, decided that they wanted to have public forums and permit the public an opportunity to comment on city business. And it's certainly within the authority of the council and the mayor to do so. I can tell you that there's no restriction in the law, there's no requirement in law providing that you have to have a public forum. That is something that is within the province of your province and within your authority to do so. There is some guidance, and this comes from the Association of Idaho Cities, which is a compendium of a lot of different municipalities across the state. It's also been vetted by other councils, by other mayors, by other legal counsel. And their recommendations as to best practices, I can't summarize it any better than what they've done so far. Let me read this to you from their council. "Many cities provide a public comment period on the agenda of regular council meetings. While this provides an important opportunity to hear from the public, there should be or also be reasonable sideboards. Items must be relevant to city government. No repetitive or abusive comments. No complaints or complaints about city staff must be made to the mayor outside of a meeting. And the time is limited to three to five minutes per speaker. And any issue requiring council action must be put on the agenda of a future meeting. One other requirement: no person has the right to disrupt a meeting. Presiding officer can't order the removal of any person who disrupts a meeting." That's the best practices that are recommended by the Idaho Association of Cities. I think that you should keep that in mind when you conduct your public forums. Remember that you're vested with the authority and the responsibility to manage the affairs of the city of Sandpoint, which is a big job. I think we talked about this at one time. It's about a $34 million job. So you got a lot of responsibility. And I think we need to make sure that public forums are conducted pursuant to those recommendations. Again, I think what you need to keep in mind is that we, my recommendation is that we keep public forums in conformance with these regulations. Maintain proper decorum. Keep the comments to matters that are of city business. And we may want to remind speakers that if we can't address something, if it's for a broader legislative purpose, if it be something that should be decided by the state or other governmental entities, we need to remind them of that. Again, this is for the public to address the city about important business of the city. That's my recommendation to you.
Thanks for that, Andy. Any questions from council on that? Deb, any questions? I have one, Andy. So, you know, it was in these times of COVID that we changed our online platform to make all of our meetings accessible to all the public through Zoom. So aren't, through that, aren't we inherently maintaining our consistency with open meeting law by, regardless of what our policy is within this room, or all of our meetings are open to the public online?
Oh, absolutely. I think the city, the council and the mayor have taken pretty broad steps to ensure that we meet the letter and the spirit of the law. We've tried, to the greatest degree possible, to keep forums open so that any member of the public can participate in the meeting and also listen to what transpires in terms of the meeting itself. So as I mentioned before, I think you've taken pretty good steps to ensure.
So regardless of whatever policy we had regarding physical attendance in the council chambers, we are meeting the spirit and intent of open meeting law?
It's my opinion you are, under the circumstances we have right now.
Okay. And I'll notify the council and members present that we have staff, at the staff level, we have changed our policy today to unlocking the doors at 5. So the public can come into the council chambers at 5 rather than earlier in the day. And that's for a couple of reasons. It's to hopefully ensure that there's more equal access to anyone who's interested in participating in public meeting, as well as maintaining the council chambers open for our own internal meetings, which happen in this room also throughout the workday. Anything else, Andy or Jennifer, on that subject? Any questions or comments? Deb, Councilwoman Rule?
I have a question to Andy. Is there anything in the open meeting law that reflects upon prioritizing comment with Sandpoint residents being heard first?
No. There's nothing in the open meeting laws that provides for public forums at city council meetings. That's something that was, that's something that was a policy decision of a former council and mayor to conduct public forums as part of your council meetings. There's no requirement in the open meeting laws that says you must do so. That's your, that's your authority to do that.
Okay. And then my next question would be relative to items on the agenda. Is there any problem with us prioritizing comments from our city residents first and then comments from others following?
There's no requirement. That would be something that the council and the mayor want. You may want to take that up as part of your public forum. Again, that's within your province.
Okay, thank you.
Those are great questions, Council. I appreciate that. And I want to recognize too, I really appreciate that the city of Sandpoint has had a very open policy with regards to public participation and public engagement. And I think that that's, that's something that we should be proud of and something that we should continue. And however, I do think that particularly given these times when we have limited space here available during these times of COVID, normally we can fit, you know, I don't know, four or five times as many people in this room. And we've hardly had a problem with physical attendance capacity issues before. So I think it is a good question and a reasonable question. We are responsible and accountable to Sandpoint city residents and people who are voters here, who are taxpayers here. Of course, we service many, many more people beyond those, that group of people. But we do have sort of a, you know, a priority of people that we serve in this community. I think it's important that we're, that we are available, first and foremost, to hear from our direct constituents and those who live and work here every day. So I would be interested to hear in the council's perspective on this issue from each council member, if you care to comment on that. And if you feel that this is also something that we should give more thought to, looking forward, as we possibly see, you know, really no end in sight with regards to the social distancing protocol. I think this is going to continue to come up. Deb, we have a full room in here tonight. Again, I don't know if there's any, I believe there's a handful or more people waiting outside right now. So I think this will continue to be an issue. And I would be interested to hear from council members if they have particular thoughts or concerns on this issue.
Mr. Mayor? I have one more comment to follow up with your statement. I think that I would love to say that there's no intent to disenfranchise anybody who wants to be heard. And I also am very aware that some of our business owners who pay taxes on those buildings but live outside of the city limits also, shall we say, have some cards in the game. So I think that all voices do need to be heard, but some refinement may not hurt.
Yeah, point well taken.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As in agreement with Councilwoman Rule, and a big thanks to city staff for bringing more opportunities for people to have access to city council and comment. Our public forum portions have been split in the top and the bottom of our meetings. We've had 20 minutes in the beginning and then 20 minutes at the end. Maybe a refinement would be priority to city residents and business owners at that first 20 minutes and then county residents or visitors at the back end.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Anyone else here, please?
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, Andy. Thank you for putting that forward. I think it's really important to recognize that historically, at least in my history here on council for six and a half years now, the participation that I've seen is traditionally very sparse until we have some really serious societal issues going on, which we have had going on over the last couple of months in a variety of contexts. So, you know, this is a good problem to have, which is public participation. I think when we have had a lot of discussion on the nuts and bolts of operations within the city that impact business owners, I would, you know, I haven't been keeping track precisely, but I would say, you know, it's probably a 50-50 split on county versus city residents because we do have a tremendous amount of business owners that might just live right outside the city limits. Dover, Sagal, what have you, that have, are, you know, sincerely impacted by the decisions that we make up here every single day. So I wouldn't say that we have a problem with not hearing people's voices. I've gotten a lot of emails saying citizens, city residents aren't being heard. That's just simply not true. At the last meeting, we had a huge amount of participation. Yes, it was inconvenient. We have never been set up for this before with social distancing. But every single person that wanted to testify was heard. And it's whether they were heard during the first 10 minutes or the last 120 minutes. It's our job to stay alert and hear them. And we did. I think that we did as a body. And so I'm very much in support of your suggestion. If we're going to have really robust participation where we have to split it into 20, I mean, this is seriously maybe the fourth time that I've sat up here in six and a half years that this has been necessary because we've had a societal issue really dominate what we're hearing from our citizens, our visitors, our business owners, and all across the board. And it's our duty to hear from everybody. But it's not, it's not the norm. So I think in the short term, Andy's suggestion is very relevant. And if we, you know, have to continue with splitting our public forum, then I'm completely in support of it, but not just citizens, but business owners as well, that people that have a stake, a financial stake in the decisions that we make up here is really important that their voices are heard in conjunction with our residents as well. They might be one and the same, but often they are not.
Thank you. Yeah?
I think, Andy, that is Councilwoman Groth. I think that that's a good compromise. Thank you very much. I too, I've been coming to city council meetings for about 13 years now. And usually out in the audience was me and me. And so it's really great to hear from everybody because we all make up the community. And being the president of the chamber, yes, we have a lot of business owners who live outside. And it is important that we hear everybody's opinion. I mean, we, you know, the emails we've been getting lately, I assume that it's more than we've ever gotten before. And it's great. It's great to hear from everybody so that we can actually make a decision because we are nonpartisan positions. We do need to, you know, in that respect, listen to everybody's voice. So I appreciate the compromise. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Ms. Madonna, any comments?
No.
Okay.
I'm happy prioritizing at the beginning of the meeting for city Sandpoint residents. Otherwise, we'll be here all night, listening to everybody whoever wants to speak. So that's why we're here.
Yep.
And Mr. Mayor, just to emphasize again that, you know, everybody, I just really would like to dispel the notion that our citizens are not being heard. I've gotten a lot of communication saying that is the case and it's just really, it just needs, it just needs to be said. It's not true. Everybody that signs up on Zoom, that is waiting in the lobby, that is here tonight, will be heard. And that has always been the case and it will be the case moving forward. So I just really want to make that loud and clear that we're here for everybody. And no matter how long it takes, we're going to hear from everybody if they'd like to speak.
Mr. Mayor?
With all, yeah, please.
I think, I think there's a point relative to access with open public meetings and, and open access and ADA access and, and other issues when we're with open public meeting, if we're selecting a group that may come in and others are not able to participate in person because of a selection process that the city is doing that I think, Andy, you alluded to at the beginning, but I don't know if the, I don't know fully the message was, was, maybe you need to clarify a little bit with that.
Yeah, I want to make sure I reemphasize the point that the meeting should be open to all, all persons. So not just someone who is a resident or a business owner. It should be available to all persons. I think it is, we need to be careful about restricting anybody from participating either in public forum or by being on the, being on Zoom or being on the phone, listening to the meeting by some other mechanism. I think that you may want to consider keeping your format open so that people can comment, not just by, by a priority system, but to keep it open so that those folks have the ability to comment during that period. You certainly can make, this is an unusual time, obviously. We wouldn't have these restrictions that we're facing right now. And we may not have the participation going forward that we, that we have right now. But I think you need to keep in mind that we need to have that open to all members of the public, not just residents and not just business owners. We need to be careful, excuse me, we need to be careful, we need to be careful if that could be construed as denying somebody access to the meeting. So that's the comment and that's the point I want you to keep in mind.
Right. And Andy, was there anything that you heard in the comments up here that suggested that that was what was being proposed?
Well, I just wanted to reemphasize, as I said, we need to make sure that if you're going to have a public forum, it's open to anyone.
And I don't think, from what I heard, I didn't think anyone here suggested anything different.
And I wasn't sure if I was hearing that correctly. That's why I didn't, I didn't get that. I just want to make sure that if you're going to have a public forum, it needs to be open to all members of the public.
Sure. Not that this is at the least or the most, but for those who are paying attention, that are listening, we are, we hear, we read your emails and we hear how difficult it is. And this was, we just articulated having this conversation and doing our best to hear what is being asked of us to represent. And we, we want to abide by the laws and the rules. So this was a conversation. And if we butt up against a potential infraction, we're, I in no way in, want to break the law. So open, open it is. And it first come, first served. And at least our public now, if they want to get on the YouTube or if they're watching this, saw and heard us articulating that forum.
So Andy, are you saying that prioritization is inherently against, you know, the discussion that we're having in terms of splitting our public forum and prioritizing residents and business owners, but also hearing, you know, in the front of the meeting and then taking public testimony at the tail end of the meeting as we have been doing so? Before, it was just kind of first come, first served. We're talking about prioritizing it, but not excluding anybody. Is that something you feel is problematic?
I don't think prioritizing is problematic, but I think we perhaps should think it through a little bit before we start to
Implement?
Implement a policy that would prioritize. The only reason I say that is the practicality of having public meetings where the public forum is split between the first part of the meeting and the last part of the meeting may have some people dialed out at the end that otherwise would have commented on something that was very relevant to the city at the beginning or closer to the beginning, if that's possible. So I think we ought to think that through before we implement a policy that says, you know, you know, absolutely only member, only residents or only residents and business owners will be heard in the first 20 minutes and then everybody else later. That's, that's what I, I mean, I heard your comments. I don't think there's anything inherently wrong with it. But I think we ought to think that through before we change the policy or modify it, so to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add from an administrative perspective, I think there are some challenges too. We need to, if council and the mayor want to go with a prioritization system, we need to look administratively at our ability to effectively manage that too from people who are coming in to sit in the meetings and maybe don't want to speak. And then during the meeting, decide that they do want to speak because we do have that come up frequently to people who, and then we're also then trying to navigate and we're going to have to figure out how we staff this for our meetings of who in staff is going through that you have priority to come in or you have priority to speak and who doesn't. And considering that we're managing it in person and we're managing it online. So we have both residents, business owners, non-residents, non-business owners, both in person as well as online. And we're trying to navigate through two different systems. So it's a bit more complicated for us to, to manage who's who and what's what, other than what they want to speak on. And we've been kind of open on the raise your hand, but now we need to screen the raising the hand electronically too, which administratively just, it could be done. It just creates more challenges unless you want to implement strictly on those coming in, those who basically on our system here separate out city residents and business owners and, and non, so that we're just sorting through basically two different piles. But still, it's online and in person. And we do have people ad hoc raising their hands. So it's just a bit more challenging in these times. I would add too that we are looking at improvements to overall our whole system, as I mentioned at the last meeting, our sound system, our access to City Hall because we weren't designed in our facility like every business owner is, is dealing with now for social distancing. So we recognize we, we don't have great social distancing out in the lobby coming into council chambers because that was never an issue. Our lobby was never designed for that. So we have been in conversations, looking at overflow for council meetings, how to get people in electronically. But we've got to identify another site and how we're going to manage that. But we are working through that, so.
Yeah. And I think we can all appreciate the complexity that, level of layer of complexity that adds for staff and administrating any kind of, you know, prioritizing that, that we would do there. But I think, given the feedback that we've heard from council, I think it's worth going back to the leadership team and just having an honest conversation about it and see if we can come up with something that maybe can, you know, carry out the spirit of what was heard here today, but is functional for council, so, or for staff. So with that, does council feel comfortable with that? And we can come back and suggest a new protocol if we can come up with something that works for staff?
In the meantime, ask the great citizens of Sandpoint to play nice and play fair.
Always. Okay. And I would say too, it's great that we have so much public participation and so much desire to engage at every level. And I will have a confessionary, confessional moment here and say that, you know, I've been involved in city politics now for over, gosh, over nine years. And I've always made it a priority to respond to every email, every message, every phone call. And I have essentially broken down on that promise here the last, I would say, five or six weeks. I've just been so overwhelmed with the amount of comments, responses, emails, everything. And you add on top of that just the complexity of having to deal with, you know, the increased challenges with, you know, work and family and stuff amidst COVID. And, and I just simply, I don't have the bandwidth or the time in the day to do that. So to all of you out there in the public who have emailed me, who've called me, who haven't gotten a response back from me, I, we are, as Councilwoman Williamson said, we are listening. I am listening. I simply don't have the bandwidth to respond to everybody. So I'm going to try, a lot of those comments and messages have been on, on common themes where I get many messages from, on a similar theme. And so I will continue to try to address those subjects and those themes, either here in this forum or with other public, public posts and, and comments. So with that, I'm sure the council is probably in a similar situation right now. It has been a lot to, lot to manage lately. So we're doing the best we can. But we really do appreciate everybody engaging and being involved. That's, that's how we have good government. So with that, any other announcements from staff? Okay, council? Okay, I have a proclamation that I would like to read. And this is, July 26 is Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. And this is July 26th is Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. So whereas some 57 million Americans, including 340,000 Idahoans, have disabilities which have caused many to undergo the indignities of discrimination, whereas on July 1st, 1988, the Idaho Human Rights Act was amended to prohibit employment discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and on July 26th, 1990, President George H. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. Whereas it is the purpose of this act to provide a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities in the areas of education, employment, government services, places of public accommodation, commercial facilities, and other vital areas of society. Whereas it is also the purpose of this act to provide clear, strong, consistent, enforceable standards addressing discrimination against individuals with disabilities. Whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions, and has promoted full participation in community life. Whereas despite progress over the past 30 years, people with disabilities still have higher poverty rates and lower employment and educational outcomes than those without disabilities. Whereas the city of Sandpoint is committed to providing the most integrated, least restrictive environments for people with disabilities and their families to live in freedom and enjoy the promise of education, employment, effective communication, participation in their communities, culture, and way of life, and to have an equal opportunity to participate as active, productive, and independent citizens. Whereas it is fitting and appropriate to recognize this state and to heighten public awareness of the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Now, therefore, I, Shelby Ross, said, Mayor of Sandpoint, Idaho, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2020, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day in Sandpoint, and hereby reaffirming that the full promise of the ADA will be reached only if we can remain committed in our efforts to fully implement the ADA, and that Sandpoint celebrates and recognizes the progress that has been made to fulfill the promise of the Americans with Disabilities Next on the agenda is the public forum portion of the meeting. This gives the public the opportunity to address the council and mayor regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. Please note that any written comments submitted by members of the public who requested that those comments be forwarded to city council are forwarded and included as part of the permanent meeting record as appropriate. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you would like to speak and do not have an opportunity to do so, we will give everyone an opportunity to speak by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. Those participating in this meeting will refrain from disruptive behavior such as loud noises, clapping, shouting, or engaging in any other activity in a manner that disturbs, disrupts, or impedes the orderly conduct of this meeting. Public participation is and will remain at the discretion of the mayor. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor should they be personally directed to any individual, organization, or business. Do not direct any questions to the mayor, city council, or city staff during your comments. If you wish to speak on a specific topic that is itemized on the agenda, please do not speak at this time, there will be time during that agenda item for public comments specific to that matter. Please note that the public comment will not be taken this evening regarding item 8A, the preliminary budget adoption. A public hearing will be scheduled for August 19th, and the public will have the opportunity at that time to provide testimony on the fiscal year 2021 budget. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. In the interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments, but simply state your support for those comments. Before you begin your comment, you will state your name and whether you reside within Sandpoint city limits. If you reside outside city limits but own property or business within city limits, you are welcome to state as much. We will now begin the first 20 minutes of the public forum. And clerk, do we have a speaker?
I'm going to call out the first three, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that'd be great.
Sage Sakamano, Susan Drumheller, and Robert Rosendary. Sage, you're up first.
My name is Sage Sakamano, and I'm a Sandpoint High School graduate who lives in Bonner County. I've been told I'm too young to have my own political beliefs, but I believe I have a right to say, a right to have a say in our government, being a local who was born and raised here in Sandpoint, Idaho. Growing up, my family has owned guns, hunted, and practiced our Second Amendment rights, but the extent in which certain groups of locals and non-locals have taken this right that most countries don't even have is completely out of hand. This is not a right or left side issue, this is a human rights issue, an issue that many say is a thing of the past, but it is very much a thing of the present. During the peaceful demonstrations that occurred, especially the one on June 2nd, 2020, I found out exactly why that is. For practicing our right to free speech, our group of local high schoolers and recent graduates were intimidated, rolled colon, and followed by them, those whom we felt were opposing our own positions. These individuals stated they were merely protecting us, when in fact, they were threatening me and my close friends that they would use their weapons if we got out of line at all. Quoting one middle-aged man to a 17-year-old girl, "You deserve to be raped for being a part of this protest." From being verbally threatened, having county members roll colon us, scream obscenities, and being flipped off, we are traumatized. To see this hatred come out of the place that I've been proud to call my home up until now was a disheartening. Over the course of the past couple months, I've seen sides of the community I had come to believe were left in the past. I've consistently defended my town of being criticized and stereotyped throughout all of my travels through Europe and the United States, but now I don't know if I could deny these statements of our town in those instances, and that is truly devastating. I expect a lot of our school district and city government. I want to see changes made, and I want to know what your intentions are to address these issues. I want to see those responsible for degrading comments and acts of hatred to be held accountable for their actions, and for all of our community members to feel safe here once again. When the city council turned down the offer from ICAP, I personally was embarrassed and hurt. I'm curious to know if you have any actions planned. I was appalled when my own school district, two years ago, didn't even address the hate CDs placed on many students' cars, threatening them just because of the color of their skin. I'm constantly hurt when I see those responsible for drawing swastikas and hateful commentary around our school not being confronted simply because they declared it as a joke. This is not a joke. I'm wondering if some community members are just trying to sweep this under the carpet and move on like it's never happened. But growth does not happen in the comfort zone, change is needed. So I want to ask you all, what are your plans? The heartbeat historically of racism has been denial. To deny what has been occurring in our town does not allow for the positive growth that we, the youth, are asking to happen. Thank you for listening to me, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for those comments, appreciate that. Miss Drumheller?
Hi, my name is Susan Drumheller, and I live in Segal, and I want to report crime. It's a crime against the community of Sandpoint. Recently, our sense of safety was stolen from us. Intimidation and bullying has gradually been growing, but it culminated with the arrival of heavily armed and camel-clad guys and gals downtown on June 2nd. That's when the heist was up. If we're not careful, we'll also soon have our freedom of expression stolen from us too. There are some in our community who want to shut down opinions they don't agree with, like Rainbow Adoring Trees and Black Lives Matter. They raise harmless and beautifully done chalk art that they call a crime, but the real crime is the ongoing intimidation campaign in this town that's putting a chill on our First Amendment rights. And I know that wasn't the intention of every person who responded when Commissioner Dan McDonald called on them to defend downtown from the Phantom Antifa looters, but that was the effect. And I'm trembling now because I'm intimidated. Also, I've been told it's North Idaho, get used to it. I say, no, that's not the North Idaho I know and I love. I've lived here for more than 35 years, and I was raised next door in rural Montana. We have never, ever needed armed vigilantes to protect us. In fact, militia activity has always been considered fringe far-right behavior. It is not normal, it's never been normal, and we can't let it become normal. This issue really got personal for me because my daughter, who was working downtown that day, told me she was alarmed and concerned for her own safety and the safety of her friends when she stepped out of work into what appeared to be an occupied territory. She'd never seen anything like it, and all the days she's called Sandpoint home, and that's been her entire life. Of course, I'm disappointed that the city didn't take up the offer of free legal advice from ICAP as well, to stop these shenanigans. And I'm sure you have your reasons, but I'm happy to report they have found some pro bono work in New Mexico. That's where a protester was shot on June 15th in Albuquerque during a protest of a statue honoring Spanish conquistador Juan de Oñada. I don't know how to say that. The protester was shot by a member of the New Mexico Civil Guard, a private paramilitary group that showed up wearing military-style camouflage and carrying assault-style rifles in an effort to protect the statue. These gun-toting guards probably didn't even care about Señor Onate, who's infamous for putting hundreds of Native Americans on trial more than 400 years ago, and then ordering the amputation of one foot of all males over 25 years old. That was after he massacred nearly 1,000 members of their pueblo. So it's no wonder he's a controversial figure in New Mexican history. Given the shooting in Albuquerque, I hope you understand why we are concerned about paramilitary activity here as well, and why we cannot ever, ever accept it as normal in any way or okay. For now, we must all work hard to restore that sense of safety that we once took for granted. And thank you for listening, thank you for your public service.
Thank you, Miss Drumheller. Robert Rosendary?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just want to call out the next three names, please, to get ready. Heather Bangaman, Steve Wasilco, and Jody Pignolay, sorry if I mispronounced them.
Thank you. Ms. Rosendary?
My name is Robert Rosendary, I don't live here, I live in Washington, Pullman. I'm here, and I'm smiling because I just heard somebody say derogatory, I'm going to speak on that. Uncle Tom, sellout, is what I was called for coming here by the very group that's here right now, because I had to be paid to come and speak my mind and stand with my friends, who aren't vigilantes, who are good human beings, just like they want, they see they're good human beings, I believe that, so are they. But you speak about compassion, and I don't believe it. Love lives here, where? Where? Prove it, because I'm being called the worst names that racist whites used to call us 70, 80 years ago, because you don't believe in what I say. I can't have my own mind. I'm a paid actor. Wrong. I'm a personal trainer for Planet Fitness, that's what I do. I came and I stood with my friends because they needed it. I came and stood for him because he needed it. In 2016, I walked across America for everybody in this room. Did you know that? Punch my name in, Robert Rosendary Plus News, you'll see it. Shook Donald Trump's hand, high-fived Obama, talked about unity for all people. And that's what we need right now, for all of us to come together. Why are we so divided right now? Why are we catering to emotion? Do what's right, instead of, oh, my heart, I mean, this feels good. Do what's right. I'm the black life that you guys are talking about. I'm the black life that you want for solidarity. Tawanza Baker, Susie Saunders, do you remember those names? That's my cousin. That's my aunt, murder in the South Carolina murder. How about Brian Ishmael, sheriff, my best friend in California, murdered. Do you know those names? Do those lives not matter? Brian was Hispanic. My name is Robert Rosendary, and that's been my time. Be better people, be the change, be the change you want to see. Quit pretending, quit running all over social media and get that done here. Respect these men, respect these people. Stop calling them vigilantes, stop calling them racist, stop calling them the KKK. What do you call me when I'm armored up, walking around with a rifle on my chest with it? They're here for you, they're here for all of you, they're here for them. My name is Robert Rosendary, and that's been my time.
Thank you for your comments.
Heather Bangaman?
Hi, I'm Heather Bangaman, I live in Segal, so outside of city limits. I would love to point out that you have no mask on at a mask mandate meeting, I thank you for your example there. Love lives here, sounds inviting and unifying, right? Wrong. It's a group wanting to cause division here in our small town of Sandpoint. I have never seen anything like this in my life, with people spewing hate back and forth. With each interaction I've had, I have had nothing but negativity and foul-spoken words to me. I have been told my grandmother is a fat bitch, and that my kids are probably worthless because they're raised by me. I find myself to be pretty highly educated, I actually research a lot of things, and I know a lot of things. My kids are actually very well-mannered, thank you, to all the people that have said that to me. That's not love to me. I want facts from them, that's all I ask is for facts. When I can present facts, because Black Lives Matter is a hate organization, they don't give me facts, they call me names and put me down. That's not love. So those are the people in town that are supporting this city council and the mayor, those people. I would also like to say that county people should be able to vote for the mayor, because there's no mayor in Segal, no mayor in Coca-Cola, so who's my mayor? I should be able to vote if it's illegal. But love lives here. That concerns me, that concerns me to the core. Another concern, while I'm gathering research on social media, because like I said, I'm pretty educated, pretty good at doing my research, I come across some of these men that I like to call more of vaginas, honestly, claim to be associated with Antifa. I'm sure you know who that is. So I'm wondering why Shelby's friends with these people on his personal page on social media concerns me. We've been called white supremacists, vigilantes, to show up and intimidate people, and what, my favorite one, racist. Never been racist in my life, I have black family members, but lady just got shot saying all lives matter, BLM. Can you define racism to me? Someone that loves Jesus and believes in every life matters. Did you know that 400,000 black babies are aborted every single year and never get to breathe, ever? So my thoughts for you guys, instead of BLM tamping, get a bus, get these uneducated white kids on it, go to an abortion clinic and protest there, have a great day.
Yeah.
I'm going to read the next three.
Thank you.
Steve Wasilco, and then Jody, and then Sandy Nicholson, and then I believe we'll be at our 20 minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Wasilco, city resident, business owner, I own six rental properties here in town. I just quickly want to say that I don't think that my voice is more important than people that live in the county. Everybody that lives in the county shops here, the kids go to school here. I show up these meetings really early because I know they're going to be packed. I think that you guys should prioritize about who gets here first. If I show up at 4 o'clock and I'm waiting out there, I think that my name should be first, because people are showing up late, and I mean, if you're going to hear everybody anyway, why not prioritize it? It's like kindergarten rules, don't cut in line, that's just a quick thing I want to say. There was something in the paper today about public officials wanting to mandate mask wearing in Sandpoint. I don't know if that's our public officials or not, I just want to say that that's totally ridiculous. I can tell you right now that nobody in this county that is not wearing a mask today is going to wear a mask. You can arrest me, I'm never wearing a mask, it's not happening. We've got 246,000 people in the five counties of the Panhandle, we've had 31, that's it, 31 people hospitalized, that's 0.0012% of the Panhandle. We've had one death, one death, that's 0.00040 of the entire Panhandle five counties. If you want to wear a mask, that's your priority, that's your First Amendment right, that's your right to do that. Keep your own health in check, you have a 0.97% chance of dying in a car accident, you have a 0.90% chance of dying from a fall, you have a 0.89% chance of drowning, you have a 0.30%, chance of dying from choking, you're still eating, you're still driving, you're still swimming. If I don't want to wear a mask, don't try to force me to wear a mask, that's just one of the most ridiculous things I've heard. I hope that is not going to come up later in tonight's COVID agenda. It would be a really big mistake, I think. The other problem I have is the whole BLM thing. These BLM people are making demands, they are not coming at you with facts, they're not coming at you with facts and saying, oh my God, Sandpoint, you know, I have facts, I've studied it, I know that Sandpoint has, you know, absolutely systematically, you know, denied the rights of the 0.1% black denied the rights of the .1% Black people that we have in this county. We don't have facts that the police are beating down minorities here, yet these people are demanding, demanding that the city be trained on diversity, and that we need to set up a community oversight watch for the police. We don't have a problem. We don't have a problem. It's absolutely ridiculous. As a person who's paying taxes on six properties in this town, and owns a business here and lives here, I would be livid if literally one cent of my money went to these absolutely ridiculous demands. We don't have a problem here. Please do not listen to these ridiculous demands. I can come up with a list of ridiculous demands, too. I could say, you guys all need to...
Ms. Wasilco, that's it for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Pignolay?
Mayor Rongstad, and members of the city council, my name is Jody Pignolay, and I have been a Sandpoint resident for the past nine years, and a Bonner County resident for the past 15. First of all, I want to thank you all for showing up tonight, for listening, and for serving our town. I'm here today to make my thoughts and feelings as a Sandpoint resident known. When I saw the video a month ago of the local teams protesting on behalf of Black Lives Matter, and the armed men and women gathering near the protesters, I was sickened. Seeing a large group of armed citizens in my town was jarring personally, and I know it reverberated throughout the community. When I watched Chief Kuhn's live meeting addressing the event, I came away very disappointed that there was no real acknowledgement of the actual traumatic impact on many members of this community. Instead, it sounded as though their actions were supported by Chief Kuhn. When I read the letter from the Institute for Constitutional Advocacy and Protection at Georgetown University, I fully expected the city to speak out more directly against the gathering of these armed citizens. I'm aware that I'm not privy to what goes on behind the scenes. I'm aware that there's a lot of this story that I don't know. It is not my intention to stand up here and criticize, nor is it my intention to create more drama by decrying the armed citizens as wrong. I'm here rather to simply let you all know, in no uncertain terms, that I don't feel resolved. And what I want is reassurance that it is clear to all that this kind of thing cannot and will not happen again, especially when First Amendment rights are being exercised. It is important to me that this kind of occurrence not be normalized at all, but especially by language such as "they were just trying to help," or "they were there to protect." Their motives aren't actually the point here. It is important that not just I, but the other residents of Sandpoint be assured that this is indeed the stance of the city of Sandpoint, if that is indeed true. Thank you for listening.
Appreciate those comments, Ms. Pignolay. Ms. Nicholson? Okay?
Thank you, council and mayor, for being here. We're in a pivotal moment in history, and you all, whether you signed up for it or not, get to be in a place of leadership in our city during this pivotal moment in history. And it's not really a time to sit on the pot of complacency, whether we agree with the greater organization of Black Lives Matters or not. The national cry from people of color and from the Black community is asking for everyone to decide for their own community what is our response to that cry. So we need to set aside our polar differences, the divisiveness of this being a far-left agenda or an attack on the far-right, and really realize that it is a moderate, you know, moderate middle that comes together and decides what the path forward is and what our response here in Sandpoint is. So our local BLM solidarity movement has done an admirable job, four of whom of the original protesters were my own children, and the youngest of whom is only, was only 14 at the time, was chased down by one of the assault rifle-carrying people, and then a week later heard his city police chief call them patriots. They have done an excellent job at proving themselves, at representing themselves of what they're here for, what they're here about, and that they really are here peacefully, and that they are reasonable. And so I'm encouraging you to take a look at their demands, at what they've laid out, which is attainable and effective, first small steps at responding to the call to racial justice in our nation. I ask that you please prioritize social justice as a Sandpoint city path forward by setting aside budgetary funding as you begin to budget, and set aside funds for anti-racism, anti-bias training for all city staff and police, for increased de-escalation training in addition to what we already have, or community engagement process to develop a community oversight board for the city police department. In addition, we're requesting that the chief of police make a public presentation to the city council to review current training and oversight procedures for police. We're also requesting that the city HR director and other appropriate staff make a public presentation to the city council to review what the anti-bias training is currently given to the city staff, and what the city is doing to combat the rise of hate.
Ms. Nicholson, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
All right, that concludes the first 20 minutes of our public forum. We'll let people exit the room here. If you still wish to speak, for those listening online or those in the room and haven't had the opportunity to do so, you're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, and the public forum will reopen again after conclusion of the business items on the agenda. Thank you for your participation, everyone. Now, we have an empty room. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,162,496.43, reflecting $512,165.21 for regular payables, and $650,331.22 for payroll. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll-call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Darlene?
Yes.
And the consent calendar is approved. The first item on our old business this evening is a proposed resolution approving the art selection and placement recommendations from Sandpoint Arts Commission for the 2020 Art on the Loan Silver Box Project, and approving the public art loan agreement that will be entered into with each of the artists whose artwork has been chosen. Arts Commission Chair Elle Sussness will provide a brief presentation. Thanks, Elle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for your time tonight. I'm Ellie Sussness, Chair of the Sandpoint Arts Commission, and I'm so pleased to present the selections for year two of the Sandpoint Silver Box Art on Loan Project. This is a rotating display of the works of art on loan from selected artists. They are displayed at three locations in the downtown area for approximately one year. We've kept the program essentially the same as last year, although this time the commission has chosen alternates for each location in case it becomes necessary. This year, the city received 24 eligible submissions via cafe.org. Each of the three chosen artists will be awarded a $1,000 honorarium to cover transportation and installation of the works. I do want to remind the public, the three works of art currently on display are available for purchase, and interested parties can contact Erin Qualls at the city of Sandpoint for more information. They are to be removed by August 30, 2020, with the current artist's contracts in place. The Sandpoint Arts Commission has recommended the following works to be on display for the coming year, to be installed by Labor Day weekend 2020. At Fourth Avenue and Oak Street, work by Nathan Robles from Kennewick, Washington. The alternate in this location is Butterfly One by Mary Andrews from Long Branch, New Jersey. At Fifth Avenue and Oak Streets, Native Eagle Chieftain by David Baranski from Sandpoint, Idaho, with the alternate Trillium by Robert Gigliotti from Boe, Washington. At Fourth Avenue and Church Street, Green Feather by Kirk Sees from Lutherville, Maryland, with the alternate Butterfly One by Mary Andrews from Long Branch, New Jersey. Finally, I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners and city staff for their work on this project, and also express my appreciation to the mayor, council, and borough for their continued support of public art in Sandpoint.
Thank you, Ellie. Appreciate that. Are there any questions or comments from council?
Ms. Mayor?
Yeah?
Thank you for that presentation. I personally really enjoyed the installations over the last year. I'm a little concerned. I believe the one near the post office was damaged. And, you know, they repaired it to the best of their ability. And that Green Feather one, is that, what's the materials on that? It looks like it could be easily vandalized, which I would hate to see.
It's a metal frame, and then it's MDO board, and painted resin applied to the...
So it's not glass?
It's not glass. So it should be fairly...
Sturdy.
Tough, and hold up to the weather.
That was just my one concern when I saw it. I think it's lovely. And I would, I love all of the selections. You guys did a great job. I just, that was my one concern about potential damage of...
The other thing is, it's 10 feet tall, plus the height of the box.
So people have to be really motivated to damage it? Okay.
It's 12 feet tall, then, so...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
I want to agree. You guys did great. I watched, I watched your video on YouTube, and it was, it was great to watch you guys interact with one another. I'm very, very, very glad that you picked the work exhibit. I, that, right, that's my life, right there.
That resonated with just about...
Yep, I heard that. And that was, it's like, you guys are my people. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yeah, I had a comment about, I know I have inquired about having more Native and Indigenous art, and my question would be, are we doing anything to check with any residents? Or, it's a very sensitive time, so my concern would be that anything that we are placing is not offensive to anyone. And have we dealt with any of those issues?
I'll leave that to Erin, as staff.
Well, as part of a republic meeting, now is the opportunity to hear any comments or against the proposals. If you hear, or if anyone wishes to address council on the night.
Okay, fair enough. Good question, councilwoman. I want to first hear from, if there's anything else, any other questions from council before we open it up to the public?
Well, I would...
Okay, great. Yes?
I would just add that nationally, there is a large movement to remove different type of Native figures from our professional teams. And I know there's a different connotation to that, but I just want to make sure that we aren't making a misstep here before those art pieces are placed.
Okay, fair question. I think we'll open it up to the public now and see what we get for response. I will say that, you know, I think just the spirit of it, what is the name of the profile, the head? Profile? Headshot, so to speak?
Native Eagle Chieftain.
Okay. So it's not, certainly the artist isn't here with us today. Okay, well, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? Anyone online? Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, there's someone who has their hand raised. I will check to see if this is the item they wish to speak about.
Okay.
Janie Rasmussen?
We can't hear you, Ms. Rasmussen. Are you there? Oh, there we are.
I can hear me now. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, council, for hearing me. Just wanted to recognize that as a visitor of Sandpoint, that I know that many city council came here, visited here, and then moved here, and so want to recognize that I appreciate being able to speak at the meeting. I currently reside at 121 Pine Street, but my permanent residence is in Washington, DC. I wanted to recognize also that I work often with the CDC in my professional capacity, and I'm sorry, am I speaking during the art portion, and I shouldn't be, like...
Yes, you are during the art portion.
That's not what I listed on my comment form, and now I'm looking here at the slide, and I heard you guys pull me up. So can I please speak at the end here, instead of interrupting the art?
Yes, that'd be, that'd be great.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you. No worries. It happens. Thanks. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this issue, or anyone else? Any other hands raised, clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, well, I guess I would entertain a motion to approve the public loan art agreement for Silver Box Project resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, this will be a roll-call. Yep, go ahead.
Sorry, there's a little bit of a delay there. I would like to strongly encourage the Arts Commission to do a little bit more due diligence in making sure this won't be offensive to any Native people before the actual art piece is placed.
Okay.
Okay, I think we can, yeah, I think we can do that. Okay. Thank you, Ellie. Appreciate that, between staff and the team. Okay, great. Good enough, councilwoman? All right, this will be a roll-call vote.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Darlene?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, a motion passes. The next item on our old business is a COVID-19 update from City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council and the community, I'm sure is aware, it's been heavily reported in the, in the media, and we've seen it online over the last week as well. We have seen a significant uptick in the number of confirmed COVID cases in our community, as well as the number of daily tests that are being performed through Bonner General Hospital. In fact, today, this morning, I received a call from Bonner General about relocating their testing site from where it is currently in front of the hospital over into the parking lot in front of their health building at, between Fourth and Alder, adjacent to Cedar, to accommodate the increased number of tests and the increasing number of tests they anticipate testing traffic to be happening over the next several weeks and potentially longer. So Chief Kuhn is working with them on setting up for that, that testing site, and what queuing would look like, so we're not having significant traffic impacts. Today, the report that we received from Panhandle Health District included an additional seven confirmed cases today. The number of confirmed cases to date is now at 87 in our county, with 57 active cases and 30 cases that are no longer being monitored. As we've discussed at previous meetings, we were going to revisit our policies and procedures here at, at City Hall and throughout our city organization relative to our employees and just general public access when we got to the point that we were seeing community spread. I can confirm that we have had a few employees, city employees, who have been exposed to individuals who tested positive, both personally, in personally, in interactions, as well as in their, their work duties here as city employees. So we have had a few employees who have had to go through testing, fortunately. To date in our workforce, all of those tests have come back negative. But we did, and council was included, in an email that went out to city staff last night about updated policies and procedures for our... about updated policies and procedures for our employees, where employees participating in meetings to be wearing, wearing masks. Our employees who are interacting with the public, we will be wearing masks too, and that's across our entire workforce. And when we're working outside of our regular workspace. So if an employee is at their desk taking phone calls, in their office taking phone calls, we're not requiring that they wear a mask while they're there at their desk space. But if they get up and move and are working in a different office area, in a conference room, going and meeting with another employee, then we are masking up in accordance with CDC recommendations and Panhandle Health District recommendations. For city employees, we are following the policies and procedures that come out through the CDC related to critical infrastructure workers. They are specifically identified as law enforcement. They are employees who are on the front lines, work in government settings, wastewater, water treatment workers. So essentially, given the makeup of our workforce and also really the limited size of our workforce and number of employees, we don't have a lot of redundancy that you see in larger cities. We, we consider all of our employees to meet the definition of critical infrastructure and are following those particular rules. Effective Monday, we are also requesting that members of the public who come in to meet with our employees, wear masks to those meetings. Again, it's for the safety of our employees here at City Hall about limiting dosage, limiting contact. And when we're in meetings, particularly within our facilities, it's difficult for us to do social distancing when we're sitting down with somebody going over building plans or things like that. And again, we also offer those meetings. We have Zoom capabilities throughout, throughout the workforce for our employees, so we can do those meetings online when people request to do those online as well. As the mayor mentioned earlier tonight, we have implemented a new policy relative to council chambers, where we're opening council chambers at 5:00 rather than leaving those, it open throughout the day for a couple of reasons. First, as the mayor mentioned, we do have meetings in here regularly. And particularly with social distancing recommendations, we end up using this meeting more often for our internal meetings or when we're meeting with the public, because our meeting spaces here in City Hall are, are fairly small. So hopefully, as we move forward with a remodel of City Hall, that will improve our meeting space, and we'll be looking at that. But for now, this is our largest room with the most space. We are also going to, we are working on implementing the new HVAC recommendations that have come out from ASHRI and through the CDC about evacuation of airflow more frequently, rather than recirculating air, ensuring that it's clean air that's brought in and, and ensuring that that happens as many times as is feasible. And there's recommendations relative to building size. So we are reaching out and having HVAC technicians come back in and look at our facilities to ensure that we are compliant with those recommendations, both for employee safety as well as for public safety. And, and again, until that's in place, our airflow in here is, is not necessarily consistent with those guidelines. So we can look at access through City Hall again as, as we get, we keep up with the ongoing recommendations and changes. We have received a number of calls from business owners, employees at businesses requiring masks, as well as from community members, and particularly vulnerable community members, asking if the city would be doing any type of distribution of face masks, like we've seen in other cities around, around the country. We have also seen multiple occasions where we have had community members, and particularly vulnerable community members, come into City Hall and take some of the disposable masks that we have available at the front door, and take four or five for themselves so that they can use it when they are going shopping or they're out in public in the community, which is something we, they're available. That's open to our community members to do. But in response to requests that we've received, we will be doing a free mask distribution, city-sponsored mask distribution for business owners, employees, and city residents this Friday at Traverse Park. So it will go through, it'll be a drive-through mask distribution that will be in the parking lot at Traverse Park from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning and from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the afternoon. So we're bundling up groups of masks, five masks at a time. And so community members who need masks, business owners who need masks for their employees, employees who need masks for their employment are welcome to come through our distribution line. And we will be distributing those masks. Our community resource officers will be leading that for us on Friday. So we have 3,000 masks available to distribute. They're the cloth masks, so that people could wash them and, and wear them multiple times. And those were purchased with CARES Act funding that was made available to the city. So again, that's in response to community requests. The mayor had recommended that we move forward with the distribution and implementation of a program. And should we see heavy demand, then we can always look into acquiring additional masks. But we have 3,000 masks that are available for distribution on Friday. And that is my update for this week.
Jennifer, I would add one, one point. In the report that came out this afternoon, that there is an inpatient in Bonner County, Bonner General. So I don't, it's unclear whether that patient is there specifically because of COVID, or they were there for some other reason and were tested positive. But that is a currently active case. So if that is a COVID case, that would be, I believe, our first one in Bonner General. Any questions or comments? Yeah?
Jennifer, I was just curious about, by whose direction was the regulation on the mask requirements for the city employees?
That is, we have administrative policies that we have developed here internally. And so the mayor obviously is, is aware of that. But it is members of our leadership team, particularly at our division head level, that meet, had been meeting from the very beginning of, of this outbreak and, and the ongoing pandemic, to visit our policies, look at best practices, CDC guidelines. And it's one of those things that we weigh health and safety of our employees, the health and safety of the public, the comfort and safety of our employees with any requirements, performing their work, impacts on their family, best practices, our role as leaders. So we kind of weigh all of those things and try to come at what is, we think, in the best interest of our employees and the best answer. And at the end of the day, we continue to look at our policies and revisions to the policies with the hope that maybe we went, looking back, maybe a little bit too far, hopefully not way over the edge. And hopefully, we don't look back and determine that we didn't go far enough. So for us, our approach internally has been as much as possible to make changes incrementally rather than sweep action one way, one way or the other. So again, there's multiple employees involved in the discussions.
Was that a unanimous decision? Was everybody united on that?
Yes, they were.
I would just ask that, that if there is any concern or setback, that they rely on council for any guidance on that?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from council? Yeah, Deb?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would like to state that I'm still very concerned. We have very much an upward trend in our community. I am looking further down the path at children returning to school and such. I feel that if we don't do more in our community, that, that will never happen, because I don't feel that it is prudent unless we have a flattening of our curve or a downtrend happen that it would be responsible to send children back to school. On that same note, I still feel very strongly about moving back to phase three. On that note, I would like to point out that the statistics that we are getting are not as accurate as you may think, because anybody who goes through Bonner General and is tested, their data actually ends up in whatever address they give as their permanent residence. We all are very aware that there are multiple people that are in this town that have secondary residences and, but their data is being shipped back to Oregon or California or where Spokane, wherever they may live. And they're being counted in their counties. They're not being counted in our county. So I don't believe that it's intentional on anybody's part, but that information is skewed somewhat. It is the same as if one of us were to go down to Kootenay because we were very sick and got tested down there. It wouldn't count in Kootenay County at KMC. It would come back up here and count. So I just want everyone else to be very aware of that. I feel very strongly, and I would like to make a motion that we mandate masks in the town of Sandpoint, because I would rather mandate masks and keep our businesses open longer and economically feasible than not mandate masks. Driggs has mandated masks. Victor has mandated masks. Moscow has mandated masks. The entire Teton County is contemplating mandating masks. I feel like the science is out there. We have watched New York and many other states do nothing, do nothing, do nothing, until it's almost too late. If we think that anything else different is happening here, it's not. It's very obvious. I don't think we need to argue the science. And even today in the news, Walmart will now be mandating masks for anybody who wants to shop in their stores. I think that that is a pretty big statement from one of the largest retails, retailers in our entire country. Starbucks has mandated mask-wearing. There is a long list of other people who are stepping up and realizing the importance of this. So I would like to know if I can get a second on making a motion--
And--
--on masks.
Thank you, council. On point of order, you know, that we don't have an action item on this agenda, on this agenda item. But if, if there was a second, then that's something that could come before the council next weekend and as an agendized item?
I would then state that I would like to have a special meeting so that this can happen by the end of this week.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We did note this, we did note this item as we've noted on our COVID updates as action items in cases we're moving forward with, with reports. If, if council wanted to make any motions, take any actions.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see that here.
Okay.
To get me, thank you, councilwoman. So there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Is, we can't discuss, right? Or I thought that we could discuss without a second?
There's no requirement for a second.
To discuss?
Correct.
Okay.
We discuss?
Yeah, I, yeah, we can open it up for discussion.
I've looked into Moscow's, Moscow's regulations and some of the other cities in Idaho, and it's quite complex in terms of what the nuances are regarding requiring masks in public. I don't feel personally prepared to make a black or white decision on that this evening without having a lot more information from staff regarding what does that mean? Is it indoor only? Is it indoor and outdoor, where you can't properly socially distance? Is it grocery stores? Is it restaurants? Some, if you're in a restaurant, how does that operate? The length of time, what the penalty is for not conforming to the regulation, how it's going to be enforced? These are all things, and I think there's a history with the council of, of being a little bit cautious. And I understand the expeditious nature of this, this request in terms of what is going on. But we've always been very careful about making new rules without understanding the implications of enforcement and staff time. And so without a very, I guess, detailed plan in front of myself tonight, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, it would be hard for me to say that's the direction I want to go in this particular moment. I'm very open to hearing, having that, you know, receiving that information so I can make an informed decision. But I can't just, you know, just say, you know, I, I mean, I personally have chosen to do it. And I think a lot of members of this community have chosen to do it. I really do feel that we are employees of the city of Sandpoint, and we all should be up here demonstrating the same behavior at this point in time, because that's a policy within the city right now. But Deb, I'm not saying that your, your idea is, is not worth considering. It's just, there are so many details to consider that I think probably all six of us have strong feelings about. So I don't know how to proceed from there, honestly.
So Shannon, I'd just like to make a comment that I made this known to staff at 8:00 AM on Monday morning, and that I requested of them to research the details and parse some of this out. I also requested that the police chief be involved in that. So how we could enforce it and all of that, because I knew that these types of discussions would happen tonight. So I'm hoping that staff took that direction and did their homework.
Please.
So as an employer, I think that you're doing a great job with taking care of your employees, and you're, you're aggressively walking up how COVID is affecting our community, our city, as well as your direct people that you are accountable to and for. And it, I think that you've listened to them, and you've provided them with, with everything that they need, as well as, I'm very proud of our city and you for allocating the 3,000 masks and providing it to our community. That is an example. I think that you're doing, you as a city and an employer are setting an example of, this is what you're providing for your employees. If we can continue to do that and be that example, you know, I'll, I'll be up here and wear a mask as a, as an elected, as within the city, happily, happily. And with you setting the example of providing masks to allow these other employees to do what it is that they feel most comfortable with, that is fantastic. I am not comfortable mandating or regulating, telling anybody what to do.
I will not support any regulation on mandatory masks.
Okay. Anything you want to say? Okay.
I just, I will mirror what Councilwoman Williamson said, and I would like more information.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
By me. We did do research into what the, the other cities were doing, so we were prepared if council members had that question tonight. And Chief Kuhn can come up and help fill out too, because I know he was reaching out to police chiefs in those other jurisdictions regarding what they are doing. The mask rules that we have seen adopted in cities and mask mandate was also put out in, at first, the city of Boise had, had adopted a mask mandate, but it is through Ada County now as of yesterday, I believe. And that mask mandate for the county was issued by the Health District as opposed to the city or the county, one of the local government jurisdictions. So-- of the local government jurisdictions. So city of Boise was through Boise. We saw Moscow mayor had issued a mask mandate. And where we are seeing that across the different communities, whether issued by the health districts or in the case of issued by a local government, it typically is a mask mandate in all public spaces. So that includes businesses that are open to the public, public spaces where there is not an opportunity for social distancing. It applies to generally, the way those have been issued is it's applied to all individuals except for children under the age of two seems to be a common marker that we have seen, as well as individuals with otherwise documented health condition, that they are unable to wear the mask. Relative to enforcement of a mask policy, most communities are, first step is through education, which is what we saw kind of in the beginning of the pandemic relative to businesses shutting down and stay at home order that was issued by the governor. But and beyond just education, then the next step is actually misdemeanor fines for not wearing masks. So it does have an enforcement implication, whether on the education front or whether on actually issuing citations and impacts on police and through the courts that way. So we have researched, we have researched this in other communities in terms of what they've done. It's been fairly consistent in terms of the guidelines. But again, in some cases, it's been a local government that has issued a public health order, which, again, going back to a discussion that we had with council earlier, it would that would require a resolution by the council and giving emergency, emergency order authority to the mayor for that specific purpose. Or it has been issued by the public health district. So the public health officer for the state, the public health officers for the the health districts within their different regions have the ability to issue a public health order.
Councilors, is that satisfactory?
Just one follow up.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Jennifer, would it be safe to say that if there wasn't mandate, the first reporting of a violation or addressing somebody that is refusing to wear a mask would be the business owner?
Enforcement has also been relative when I so when I'm speaking about enforcement, enforcement, I'm speaking about relative to how law enforcement has been handling it in the different jurisdictions. We have seen this adopted by jurisdictions, by local government jurisdictions, by the states, as well as by public health agencies where they have put the onus for enforcement of those mask orders on the business owners, too. So where business owners are not to be allowing somebody to come into their premises, providing services to somebody who's not wearing a mask. So in that case, then it would go down the path of a business owner refusing to provide service. I would imagine in that case, if the person doesn't comply, insists on staying, you're looking at then business owner charging them, wanting to charge them with trespassing or something else. And then that's when police gets involved. So I generally, across communities, it is being enforced through public education as opposed to issuance of citations or charges or anything else. We've seen reports where it's gone further than that. But and particularly in one of our neighboring areas where somebody, I believe, who had tested positive for COVID and was not complying with either mask or stay at home, actually, the public health officer in Spokane County had ordered that person jailed. So public health does have enforcement authority and the ability to put out public health regulations in addition to local government doing it through an ordinance or giving emergency powers to the to the mayor in in those cases.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So does our health district have the bandwidth to do this? Do our does our police have the bandwidth to do this?
All right, Chief. The chief has to speak from the, I think, really from the police perspective. We have had conversations with the the health district about whether this is something that they are looking at doing. I believe the mayor addressed this at the our last council meeting, the last communication we had with the health district is, at that time, they were not looking at going down the path of ordering the masks. Subsequent to those, that conversation, we did see them release a public statement, again, encouraging the use of masks and putting out a strong statement. But our last conversation did not indicate that they were going to go down the path of ordering the masks. And some of that I do think is the concern relative to bandwidth for enforcement.
And I would just, sorry, Corey, but I would just reiterate, too, that the governor has made it clear that it would it would be left to a local decision, whether through the the health district or local jurisdictions like this body here.
So I was truly hiding in the corner. So I didn't hear the question. Do we have the staffing to fully enforce such an ordinance? You know, that's, that's one of the things I appreciate about our councils. They've never passed an ordinance yet that we can't fully enforce or get behind. This would be one of those challenges, depending on how the ordinance is written, on what the requirements for enforcement be. So yeah, that would be an absolute, it would be a challenge to effectively enforce it.
Councilwoman Rule. You're on mute.
I, okay, I know. It's something in front of my screen. I couldn't get there quick enough. Sorry. I am going to really push back at that. I don't believe that that's an excuse to not do something that we think is right and will save lives. I think once that it's known and it's mandated and there's a fine in place, and it's maybe has to be enforced a couple different times, once word spreads that that is what we're doing, I think it will be a lot easier. Nothing is a perfect world, but I don't feel like it really should have any weight in the decision that we make. I think Corey can speak to the fact that we don't have, as can Andy, we don't have laws for 80 to 90% of the people. We have laws and enforcement for the rest of the people that can't follow through. So I think that we have so many people visiting our area right now from out of state, you know, one quarter of the plates in City Beach right now are 7B plates. Half of them are from Washington, Kootenay County, I've seen plates from Utah, Louisiana, California, North Dakota, Wyoming, Michigan, Missouri, Wisconsin, all in our city beach right now. So I'm really concerned that we are going to end up like Sun Valley ended up. There was a plea, there was a plea from all of the healthcare workers, especially in the region of Boise, for a mask mandate. Again, the science is already there. The history is already there. We've watched towns, we've watched states push back, and then they finally get to the point where they're starting to drown and they decide, okay, yes, we got to do this. Our governors and our White House is now starting to wear masks. It's taken a long time, but I don't know what we are waiting for.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay, I would remind the council, we have a motion on the table. Is there anyone who would second that motion? All right, hearing none, the motion dies. I would still invite the public to comment on this issue. If anyone would like to speak up on this issue, you can come forward. And have you filled out a comment card with the clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I do have some folks who have filled out those cards.
Okay, would you read it? Read them off, please. And if those who would like to speak and have not filled out a comment card, you can get that with the clerk right there.
Claire Stansbury. I'll read the first few. Len Ackerman. And then Janie Rasmussen is online and would like to speak on this matter.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I didn't come here expecting to be talking about mandatory masking, because I came as a person who is an educator and who desperately wants to see children in classrooms in the hall, recognizing that many students in our area rely on the services they get at schools, whether because they are students with special needs, whether they are the children of essential workers, whether they are children who just need the company of other children. They need a space of public schools and of all the schools in our community. My, the reason I want to talk on the COVID-19 question is that I do see that there is this diversity of opinion in our community about masking and about how to implement the best things. And I think that we need to pursue this with a really open idea of how we can approach this so that we reduce community spread. And that is really the critical thing that is actually going to allow students to come back to school. And so it might mean masking in communities. And if that is not the solution for our communities, then we have to be more creative. And that is hard. And it is hard because our health district is giving us guidance, but they are also hesitant to mandate things because they know that we are North Idaho. We are independent and stubborn and hate being told what to do. And I love that about living here. But my concern is that that dislike of being told what to do personally negatively impacts people who are the most vulnerable and who do not have the power to make those personal choices. If you are a person who works at minimum wage and has a child at home and you get exposed, there is no way for you to stay at home and not infect other people. Wearing a mask helps that. Wearing and not having your coworkers shame you for wearing a mask helps that. And that's where these rules and guidance and public outreach, I'm really appreciative to hear that you are distributing masks to people so that they can put them on and wear them as protection. That's really important for our community. But we can look at more creative solutions. Can we look at ways we can get more people outside? There is so much evidence that being outside is really helpful. Are there ways we can help dining establishments move more people outside, bars to more move more people outside? We know that dining and bars are places we want to keep open. They're so incredibly important to our community and to the economy of our area. But are there ways we can make this happen? I got a notification I for I went to school in Maine. I got a notification when I because I'm still on their parking thing that back in May, they closed down about half of their downtown so that they could give everyone permits to be out on the streets so that they can open their incredibly vibrant restaurant business and move them out. Those are the kind of solutions, I think, as a city, we can look at those as a big, as a holistic picture. And then the other piece I would really advocate is we, as a city, have to early on establish a way that we are helping people identify that they have been exposed, identify that they are a case and isolate. If we are identifying every person who is exposed and every person who is a case, we do not have community spread. That is really the thing that underlies every country, every place that is able to open their schools is that they know who has it, and they have the community helping them to make that happen. Are there ways we can make that happen as a city council? Masks are a secondary solution. The first solution is that we get together as a community and say, how can we make the spaces safer and make sure people are able to take care of themselves when they're sick and take care of their families when they're sick? How do we support that big picture shift in our community?
Thank you, Ms. Stansbury. Those are passionate comments. Appreciate that.
Len Ackerman.
Thank you. Mr. Ackerman? No?
Corey.
Is there anyone outside?
He's in the hallway. Len Ackerman.
Thank you, let me check.
Mr. or Mrs. Rasmussen? Oh, is that they're online?
Yeah, she's she's unneeded now.
So that's, you spoke earlier in the art section on accident. I'm embarrassed. I heard my name called and panicked and started talking. So apologies. Thank you again, Council, for having me speak at the appropriate time and for not interrupting your agenda, business around public art. Thank you also, Councilwoman Rule, for drawing attention to indigenous and Native American artists as we are all speaking on and see a land of the Kootenai and Calisville and other coastal sales tribes. Appreciate that. As I was saying before, I'm a long term visitor of Sandpoint with my permanent residence currently being in Washington, DC. I value Councilwoman Rule's position to mandate masks. I work in outdoor recreation policy because that is a health and wellness adjacent field. I communicate with the CDC often. The science that they presented is overwhelming, that masks prevent infected people from spreading the disease. And especially if the mask is quality with tight woven cotton does protect you from catching it. A spread of the disease is primarily person to person and contact tracing within the Panhandle Health District revealed that cases have been contracted by those not following physical distance measures and not wearing masks, and that the cases were mostly occurring from person to person indoor interactions. Outdoor spread and surface transmissions are rarely observed, but of course, these are unprecedented times with incomplete data. You know, I really wish that we could rely on recommendations and not mandates. But by not mandating masks, you are allowing asymptomatic carriers to spread COVID-19 to Sandpoint's most vulnerable populations, including a close friend that I live next to. As a long term visitor and an outdoor recreation professional, I recommend that Sandpoint mandate masks for entering indoor public spaces at the very least. Just yesterday, the director of the CDC, Dr. Redfield, published a report stating that if everyone wore masks, the pandemic would be over in just 48 weeks. I don't like wearing a mask. And to be honest, people look at me very strangely here for wearing one. I was at Dubbs the other day, and a woman actually clutched her child closer to me as if forever some sort of masked bandit. I'd love to just show my face in public spaces again, but we won't be able to do that if we don't all wear masks and help to work to bring this pandemic to an end. Wearing masks will save lives of residents, of visitors, and maybe even your own lives. Thank you, Council, for allowing me to speak at the appropriate time and to Sandpoint and Bonner County residents and full time business owners for having me as a long term visitor when I see the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Rasmussen. Appreciate those comments. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I would like to ask those that are attending online, if you would like to speak on this matter, please to raise your hand. For some of the signups, it wasn't clear which matter that they wish to speak on. So if you do want to speak on this matter and you're online, please raise your hand. Thank you. And at this time, we call Robert Edmondson.
Thanks, everybody, for being here. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to share my thoughts on this. I am a local business owner as well as an employee at a local grocery store and been through the roller coaster of mask mandates and financial ramifications if you don't. And about 80% of us chose not to. The owner retracted that idea and went to it as a suggestion. Just as of yesterday, we submitted the idea of mandatory masks, and we were told we could wear a badge if we had an underlying health condition, if we could not wear a mask. I would propose that 100% of us have an underlying health condition. The God who made us gave us a respirator to breathe in and breathe out. Every time we breathe in and breathe out, we are filtering out toxins that are in our cells that our body's trying to flush out. Every time we breathe in, that's trying to breathe fresh air to get blood and our oxygen. It is proven that if your oxygen levels are monitored in your blood with a mask on versus with a mask off, it's about an 8% reduction in oxygen in your blood if you're wearing a mask. I watch all day long. I can't help it. My eyes are drawn to it. I see I see children going through the grocery store sagging mask on their face. They're walking with two hands, trying to keep it on. They're touching their ears, their eyes. I mean, those who work with kids, I've been a full-time teacher. I mean, they're wiping their snot, they're touching their eyes. If they're wearing masks, it's going to actually expedite the spread for them because kids can't keep their hands to themselves. It is impossible to ask them to be six feet away from each other for a second grader. I've taught kindergarten, I've taught second grade through fifth. I've taught junior high. None of them can stop touching each other. If we ask them to, we're stopping them from being human. It's called a relationship. We touch each other, we look at each other, we read each other, express it. It's part of being human. The masks are not proven. I don't hear what the people... I do care. The science is not definitive. If it was, I'd be wearing one right now. I'm in contact with people all day long. They come right up and they're grabbing the produce while I'm trying to do my thing. I don't see... Get away from me. What are you doing? We're sharing information, our microbiome. These things that we're learning about in science are huge. And if we're going to rely on the hope of a vaccine or the hope of a mask blocking some virus from getting in, a virus can get in through the mask. The masks that prevent it are not available to everyone. And most people are not wearing them correctly and they're constantly touching their face. And it's just causing more germs to be available to them because it's right on their face and they're breathing it in through all the gaps in their masks.
Mr. Edmondson, your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
I recommend we go.
Mr. Mayor, Len Ackerman is online.
Mr. Ackerman? Are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry I had to leave earlier. I got medical problems. But listening to the gentleman that just spoke, he's somewhat right. I have a lot of breathing problems. I have COPD, emphysema. And with the mask on, my oxygen drops to the low 80s. Without it, I get the upper 80s. On a good day, maybe 90. I have been reading extensively and find no absolute science on these masks. I see people wearing the cowboy bandana. I'm not sure what that does. Doesn't maybe look cool. If you go out and somebody's wearing this mask around dust, paint, anything, you look around their nose and you see a lot of particulates coming in around the mask. We can't make these seal tight enough. If there was an absolute science that dust masks work, I'd be great. But if you look at people that do viruses, they wear a hazmat suit for good reason. Viruses will go through all of these dust masks, bandanas, and anything else. Yes, if you sneeze on somebody, it'll stop the particulate. Most of them. But the last time somebody sneezed on me was my granddaughter and she was about three months old. And that was about 16 years ago. So I don't think that these are a great thing. If... They're superstition in a sense. We like them. They look good. They make us feel like we're combating something, but actually, we're not. Social distancing is a little better. But the masks in and of themselves do nothing. You look at stores that mandate the people wearing them. Some here in town, you see them. They're below their nose. They're way up high. The bottom isn't passing. So what's the purpose? Under the current situation, if I put a fishnet over my face and called it a mask, everybody'd be happy because I'm wearing a mask. So that's just my two cents worth on it. And I'm about out of air, so I'm going to let you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Appreciate the humor there. Anyone else?
Ken Lawrence.
He left. He's online.
Heidi Hamm.
Thank you for letting me talk. So this is just on COVID, right? About anything?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So health and safety was mentioned by a council member. It's very interesting to bring that health and safety up as a city. So my question is, what is the liability of the city of Sandpoint if and when there's a hospitalization if you did make masks mandatory due to lightheadedness, dizziness, passing out while driving or working long shifts? So that's just a question for you. I don't know what that answer is. Science can be swayed and is being swayed. It's fact. I'm asking for the council members that are in support of mask wearing, if you could somehow create something on your website that cited your scientific research papers that you were reading that are not attached to the CDC and World Health Organization. One of the biggest reasons is because they flip flopped a lot. If everyone remembers in the beginning, it was nobody should wear masks. And does everybody remember that part? And then wear masks and social distancing worked and then social distancing wasn't going to work. And then there's asymptomatic and there wasn't asymptomatic. So if there's any science that you have, I would love to read it. If you could prove that to me, I would wear a mask. Absolutely would wear. And if you would be open to the possibility of reading science that I'm reading, peer-reviewed journals from around the world that are actually opposing mask use, I would love to share that with you. So I would love to do that. I have a question about the health and safety part again. Is there something on your website that you could support people on how to boost their immune system? Is there information on... How far do you want to take it? Is there information on talking to people that have low immune systems and that don't understand how to build their immune system, that don't understand their lymphatic system, that don't understand the importance of right eating and keeping the lymph moving? Is there information on there? And I would offer my free time to help support that if you wanted to create something like that on your COVID website to support our public. What else do we have here? I'm scratching around. And... Let me do. So I guess it's pretty much it. Oh, the COVID is glitter thing is cracking me up. If anyone has ever done a craft project, and I don't really like glitter because I find it to be micro trash, but I have friends that like glitter and they do glitter stuff, their glitter always ends up on my work, no matter how far I put myself from them. I could be in another room. I could be outside. Somehow their glitter gets on me. That's what this virus is like. That's what a lot of viruses like. It's everywhere. If any of you think that you haven't been exposed to at this point, mask or no mask? Am I up?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it, Ms. Hamm. Clerk, do we have another?
Todd Prather.
Is he online?
He is.
Hello, everyone. My name is Todd Prather. I'm a local business owner here in Sandpoint. And I just wanted to point out Councilman Rol's stance and I believe it's Jennifer there. Everything they brought up, it was all mentioning what's being done in other cities around Idaho as a precedent. And I wonder why we aren't looking at science instead as a precedent when we're all just reacting and doing what the next town down the road is doing? What are we really accomplishing here? And I'd like to point out that these tests, we're doing more tests than ever. So we're going to get more results than ever, positive and negative. Those tests are testing for antibodies, which we all ultimately want. You know, we remember chickenpox parties and the way, you know, people get with each other to be infected on purpose is something that happens, especially with a disease like this that has a 99% recovery rate. So the people that need protection need to protect themselves as usual. And I think, you know, as a city, we need to stop and think instead of reacting and looking down the road at what everybody else is doing and instead look at the real science. And like the previous speaker mentioned and some other speakers, the CDC and the WHO are flip-flopping constantly and, you know, hardly seem to be a reliable source of genuine scientific information. So that's two cents I wanted to throw out there. I'm just kind of trying to drum up common sense in town here and that we all, instead of react, that we respond. And I'll see the remainder of my time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Crather.
Cory Obenauer.
Thank you for hearing me. With respect, Mayor Shelby, council. So I want to speak on COVID a little bit. One, we look to you as our city council and the intelligence and the leadership of our community. And education is paramount in all directions. So let me say a couple of things. One, I applaud all those who want to protect their families and their loved ones and wear masks and social distance to protect themselves from this COVID-19. I myself definitely social distance, my family, social distances. I have a business. Everybody knows me as a woodworker. But here's the other side of my life. Before I was ever a woodworker, I was a boilermaker, welder, fabricator. And so I have a triple journeyman ship and a master welder certificate. And in that, I breathe a lot of welding fumes, grinding dust, but I've also been trained in all areas of hazmat with H2S, different fumes, different concentrates that can kill you upon breathing them within a matter of seconds. And I can tell you that the surgical masks, the masks that some of you are wearing, the little masks and the bandanas and everything will not protect you from a virus or from a germ. If anybody has never heard about sugar test, you should research it. And I hope that you will in your research to determine whether or not you should mandate masks worn in our community. A sugar test is one where a mask, an EN 529, is the least acceptable by OSHA since we were teenagers. Okay? And that mask has to be properly fitted and sugar tested. And by a sugar test, they make a sugar solution. They spray it around your face when the mask is properly fitted and you breathe. And if that mask is not absolutely fitted to your face, you'll taste sugar immediately. And that's an improper fit. If you have an improper fit, not only will H2S kill you in seconds, you will breathe in germs. You will breathe in viruses because it's not an acceptable fit. So I implore you to educate yourself further since you're going to make the decisions for this community. And in all the rhetoric and in all the information and in all the research, I haven't heard the word sugar test once. And it's prevalent in the working community and in OSHA regulations to properly test and fit a mask to keep germs and viruses and breathing noxious fumes into your body. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Obenauer. Appreciate those comments. Clerk, do we have another?
Brendan Wien.
Hi. Thanks for listening, I guess. I just came today to get a little bit more information about what you guys were thinking about for mask regulations. Me personally, I don't think that masks are a bad idea. I don't think that masks are particularly ineffective. I don't think that wearing a mask one way or another is a statement of any sort. I think that it's a great idea. I think that it can, in close proximity, keep... If it can reduce it 10% and you're around someone that is at risk, I think that's a great idea and I don't think that's something silly to do. I think that the whole efficacy of the mask issue isn't really the point in this situation. It seems to me that the point would be role of government and whether or not we trust citizens to make informed decisions for themselves. And if we see the individuality of our community as an asset, we can see people making their own decisions for themselves and their families as something that is something that is great for our community as opposed to a liability. So I would be against mandating mask wearing. I would not be against heavy recommendations that businesses provide masks at their front door or that businesses say if you... Like if a business that I would like to give my money to asks me to wear a red shirt if they want to... If I want to go into the building, then I'm going to wear a red shirt to go into the building. I don't think that businesses, like when Walmart mandates masks, when I go to Walmart, unfortunately, when I have to, I will wear a mask because it is a private business asking me to do so on their premises. And I don't have any right over their property or their employees or anything else. I think that that's a great way to handle this. I think seeing... And if there is a business that would like to take a stand and say, "I do not want masks in my store," then that business should also, you should respect that and not patronize that business if you feel like that is inappropriate. Yeah, I just think that this is a role of government issue and not a mask efficacy issue because masks are obviously somewhat effective and not effective at other things. They're not going to keep you alive in a noxious fume situation. They're not going to pass a sugar test necessarily, but they're also not completely ineffective. So I think the efficacy issue, both people are saying things that are true and they're talking right past each other. And I think that's unfortunate and a waste of time to talk about. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Re. Appreciate those comments.
Ben Mederos. Chief, is he in the hallway?
You can call up the next clerk.
Then Jeremy Harbor.
Yeah, I would just like to make an appeal on behalf of Americans, on American soil and kind of under the guise that he said, "What right does the government have to enforce?" Something that's, you know, requested or mandated in a sense of like criminal punishment or anything like that. It just, it sounds ridiculous to me. We're in America. So I'd just like to appeal to my fellow Americans here that believe in the Constitution, believe in our rights to choose, believe that we do, you know, have access to the knowledge and that we can make informed decisions on our own. And, you know, also the fact that I've heard, you know, a lot of big box names mentioned by certain people and a lot of mainstream organizations. And, you know, there's counterarguments to that. The truth fears no investigation. So I would encourage anyone that's maybe undecided about this or that maybe is decided but hasn't looked at the other side of the coin and the counterarguments, that's not a fair way to make a decision or make up your mind about anything. So I'd encourage you to go and research for yourself because yes, the science is not behind the mask preventing the transmission of this virus. And, you know, the numbers, you know, for the infection rate, the death rates, all of these things have been publicly, you know... It's been talked about in public that, you know, these numbers are not correct because they're based upon faulty testing. They're based upon numbers that even Deborah Burks of the... I think she's with Dr. Fauci in the National Health Agency, right? They came out and said that they're listing deaths or as COVID deaths for people that didn't even die of COVID symptoms but died of another cause, but yet tested positive for COVID. So, you know, they're telling us publicly that these institutions and their science cannot be trusted. So, you know, before you... You know, and I can second what this man said about the mask as well. I work in the oil field in Texas. I'm a Texas transplant. And, you know, I've been here for five years. And yes, they have to fit those masks because any of the sugar test is real. I mean, just look it up. It's very simple. But, you know, you can die of H2S if that mask is not fitted to like, I don't know, 98% of no leakage. I mean, you're going to die of H2S. But, you know, so, yeah, I just hope that people would do the research before you, you know, before any of you make a decision because there is, there are many counterarguments and they're very logical. And so, you know, that's our right as Americans, right, is to weigh things out on our own and make our own decisions, not be forced, you know... own and make our own decisions, not be forced, you know, by mandates or laws to do anything against our will. I mean, this is, this is America and I hope that we can keep it that way. That's one thing I love about North Idaho since I've been here. You know, Texas has a herd mentality. North Idaho has common sense, common decency, common respect and common courtesy for one another. And so, you know, um, you know, I can trust that people here are going to be informed and make good decisions, you know? They're not going to put anybody else at risk. But thank you for, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for those comments, Mr. Harbor.
Kate Jorison.
I didn't plan on being here today, but I was on my last trip to Walmart when I got the call. So decided to, uh, my last trip because they're mandating masks on Monday, so I will not be spending my money there. But you must hear from your county community because often our voices don't matter in the county. I was thinking about some things that Deb Rule said. And, uh, you cannot ask healthy people to wear a mask. And now it has went from masks to face coverings. And Inslee even said, even if it's not effective, just cover your face, just cover your face. It's not even about a virus anymore. It's about covering our face. I mean, is this a religion? What's going on? The CDC is changing their numbers all the time. It's less and less of a threat. We do not see people dropping the streets just because of a positive test doesn't mean that these people are a threat. Um, and I must add about the test, if it's so contagious, have you researched this test? I mean, they're shoving a stick almost past the blood brain barrier. Sounds like torture. Uh, and what about our community with medical conditions, keeping them from wearing a mask? How are we gonna, um, see true, see to them what's fair for these people? Um, also, when we were talking about our tourist town and Love Lives Here, we should be accepting these tourists and out of towners, not be scared of them being here. People seek our area because of our freedoms and because of how beautiful it is and interaction that they can get with our wonderful society. I'm not sure if Deb's, Deb's really done the research on wearing a mask and how dangerous it is for children especially. There's a lot to be learned before we are asked to cover our face. In the spring, it was mentioned that come summer, that 82 degree weather would kill COVID, the heat, the sunlight, all those things were mentioned. And now summer is here and we're amping up fear again. We're going backwards. We're living in fear. She's not here. I mean, I would guess it's because she's in fear. You cannot make rash decisions out of fear. There's nothing social about this distancing. We need human interaction. We have to see people's smiles. I have noticed the eyes of the local worker, workers lately looking completely empty. When I saw my fellow workers at Yolks, which I love to shop at, our eyes were completely empty and dead. And I asked her, are you, are you guys forced? And she just sadly, yes. She has to keep her job. What does she do? So she puts it under her chin to breathe. She wants to breathe. As long as it's on her face, she can keep with her job. This is a complete power, power grab and control grab. And if your mask works, why do I need one?
Brian King.
Ditto to most whatever Biddy has said. The framers and the founders based this, when they did their Declaration of Independence, they envisioned us being able to be self-governed. And now every bit of our day is being dictated by some administrative bureaucracy. Okay? Was it John Jay that said, "We need to have decisions based on reason and not mob rule, not on emotion." I've been on the phone a lot in the last four months talking with biomedical scientists across the nation. I've been an educator for 40 years and nobody has yet to share with me a peer reviewed document. And, you know, look at the biomedical scientist journal. There's nothing in, go to, go to cell, okay? And look to see if you can find any peer reviewed document that says that the cotton mask or any of the masks that you guys are wearing has any merit behind it. Okay? Anybody that's been in boot camp and, uh, put the mask on and, uh, tested to see if they had a good seal and they had to be able to, um, be in environment with, um, with gas, they'll tell you that if the seal isn't there, they're breathing it. And I tell you what, that, um, the gas that they give in boot camp is a whole lot bigger than what you guys are thinking you're separating out with those masks. It's also been said that the WHO and the CDC has changed their, their policies repeatedly and they have. Okay? This was supposed to be a 14 day, um, eliminate the curve and what has it turned into? The CDC has changed how it measures stuff. Okay? You're in the hospital and you cough once because somebody with some perfume walked behind you, guess what? You're now a CDC patient. It's all BS. Their recommendations are constantly changing. The models, the Imperial University model changed.
Mr. King, Mr. King, that's it for your time. Thank you for your comments.
Karen Getty.
Thank you for the time that you guys put in here. I've always been someone that doesn't really speak up. I kind of go with the flow and trust those that are in your positions to make the right decisions. But we clearly are here all for the right reason. We all want to stay healthy. We want everyone to be healthy through this, not get sick. So I think we're all here for the right reason. But it's become, um, definitely uncharted territory. Um, I'm a teacher in the district here and I am very concerned about returning back to school. Um, not because I'm afraid I'm going to get sick. I get sick every year at school because I'm exposed to the germs if I don't take those necessary precautions of the common sense. Your nutrition up, get good sleep, wash your hands, raise your arm, cough in your arm. You know, we all have those common sense measures that I think we need to keep doing. But there's a whole other layer to this for me that when I go back to school and these kids and I'm required to wear masks, there's a whole psychological level there that affects us innately and will affect our immune system. This will depress their immune system. I mean, we heard someone talk about the oxygen level, you know? Why don't you sleep with the covers over your face? Well, because you can't breathe. You wouldn't get the right amount of oxygen and that wouldn't be healthy for you. And therefore I think this would depress our immune systems. And then you're more at risk for getting the virus. Whereas if we just take some common sense measures, um, it also is, I work with, I'm a special education teacher, so I work with a lot of emotionally, um, traumatized children that masks, if I have to have a mask on my face, they aren't going to be able to hear me, they aren't going to be able to see, they're going to be scared. And if they're having to wear a mask, that's scary to them, um, on top of the health issue. I just can't support mandating masks in our community. I don't think we have done enough research on this and I implore all of you, please, please start spending hours of researching this because that's what I was trained to do. I got my master's degree. I was trained, do your research, make sure you have your sources and are they valid sources? I just, I'm very passionate right now because this is super emotional for me to see everybody so divided.
Ms. Getty, your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Clerk, do we have anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. April Walker. She's coming from the hallway.
We have anyone online?
No one else has raised their hand. If there's anyone online who would like to speak on this topic, please raise your hand.
Ms. Walker, you can come forward to the podium and, um, if you can state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
April Walker. Thank you so much. I've never been to a city council meeting before. 51 years old, I have seven children, seven grandchildren. And so I'm just a concerned mother and a concerned grandmother. Um, I think about my own family and I have a daughter that tries to wear a mask. She lives in Utah and they have stricter rules there and she gets anxiety and she can't go out. I have a sister that puts on a mask and she gets asthma. And otherwise they're pretty good, pretty normal, can function fine in society. But that's just a simple thing with two people in my family that are directly adversely affected by a mask who don't have a really severe health condition. Um, I think about putting kids back in school with masks on and you take away their identity. And I think you have severe problems with psychological issues with kids getting bullied if they don't want to wear a mask or just, or just, just not being able to see somebody's face. Um, I think you have psychological issues. I don't believe that, um, we have a severe health problem here in our community that warrants having a mask. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else, clerk?
Brett Walker.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I think that this thought of the mask feels like, uh, what, what I'm experiencing here is a minority attempting to enforce itself on a majority. Um, and I feel as, uh, it's a threat really in a sense to freedoms that I really hold dear. And as I look at the way that it's being enforced, and that's the problem, is the force of it, the enforcement, using law enforcement or using the government to impose something on those who have done their research and believe that they're, that this is a farce. It's not as real as it's being said that it is. And, uh, I mean, how many people have died in the city of Sandpoint? How about in the county from COVID-19? How many have we lost? Anyone know? One?
None.
None. How many are deadly, deathly sick in our hospitals right now with COVID-19? Let's look at it in reality. I think it's a good question to start asking. We have a wide range of people, thousands of friends across the nations. We toured across the country for 12 years. And in the thousands of our friends, we have not heard of even one being sick with it, let alone dying from it. I think we have an overreaction at an extraordinary level. I, for one, if you choose to enforce it now or in the future, I'm just going to bypass my town of Sandpoint because it's no longer my town, it becomes your town. That, I think that's sad. At a time when you choose to enforce something upon me and upon others, I'll just walk around your town. I'll take my hundreds of dollars a week that I spend here and I'm going to go somewhere else with it. Um, and I'm going to encourage as many people as I possibly can to do the same thing, Mayor. Thank you.
Appreciate those comments. Okay, I think that's it unless there's anyone else. Um, yep.
Mr. Mayor, Kate Reader signed up. Kate, are you here?
Yep, that's me.
Okay.
Well, like she said, my name is Kate Reader and I'm the general manager of Hydra Steak House. And I am begging you to not allow mandated masks to happen. I would invite any council man or woman who suggests or endorses the use of mandatory mask to come work an average eight hour shift on our kitchen line. We have open flame charbroil, which I'm sure probably everybody here has enjoyed a steak there before. Uh, average temperature behind the line, I would say probably on the lightest scale, maybe 140 upwards to 160. I don't know if any of you would be able to handle staying back behind the line on open flames at 150, let's say an average, degrees with a mask over your face for eight hours. Or on average, because I typically wear a step counter, on a pretty normal slow day, I walk about six, or about six miles. On a real busy day, I walk about 14. I don't know if any of you have ever done vigorous walking while you're really kind of running and you're ducking behind things or you're making drinks and you're going back on kitchen lines while you're wearing a mask, but it really is unfeasible. You know, councilwoman talks about wanting to help the economy of our small businesses and if we mandate masks, it will not help at all. We will lose our employees because frankly, no one is going to want to work behind or in a restaurant wearing a mask. Me, I don't at all. I probably won't. We'll lose our employees, which we're already on such a thin margin as it is right now. Uh, no one will want to work and I just, it's unfeasible. You know, we see probably about 200 to 300 people a day. We have been outrageously busy since restart, uh, our reopening, which thank goodness for that. And it is incredible the amount of people that thank us for not wearing masks, that thank us for giving them a normal environment to come into. And I refuse, I will not go into work, I will not have a mask on my face. It's, I mean, it's really, it's unfeasible for the, the entire community. Schools, it is detrimental to our children. We cannot allow it to happen. If you're concerned about getting sick, stay home, please. Wear a mask in public, but do not force it on others to do it because you are afraid of your health and your safety. You know, they talk about, uh, Councilwoman Raul or however you pronounce the name, brought up the fact of having so many out of state plates. I agree. The majority, I'd say probably 80% of people we have coming into the Hydra right now are out of state people from all over the place, New Jersey, New York, I mean, literally all over, which I say welcome. Thank you. You are helping us rebuild after being closed for two months, what was not our choice even inside of spit. And so I welcome them with open arms into our community and I don't think that we should mandate masks because then they will not be coming here. The majority of them say that they come to our area right now because they want a bit of normalcy and we will lose that if we do mandatory masks. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for those comments.
Mr. Grafton, did you want to speak now?
Thank you for having me. I'm Ted Grafton and this, this is my first time here and it's, it's kind of exciting. I'm glad to be here. Uh, I head down on my deal about law enforcement. I'm a retired law enforcement and, uh, but I won't go into that issue. Uh, the mask issue is not the problem. The, as you, as I can look around here, I see ones with masks, ones without, ones that need to talk, take the mask off. So the mask is not the problem, whether you have it or not. And if you mandate that, make it a law, you're going to create law enforcement to have to do something to someone who is not a law breaker to become a law breaker because it is not right. The mask is not the problem. The problem is that the COVID-19, there is the truth that is not coming out about it. That, that's the problem. We are not getting truth. We are getting false information and it's bringing panic into people's lives, it's bringing panic into Sandpoint, which doesn't need to be here. If, if Sandpoint were to compare themselves to New York, to all these big cities that have an agenda of trying to shut down the United States of America, the Constitution, that's the agenda. Walmart making mandatory to wear masks, they have an agenda of who's backing them, that they have to do that. It's the same way with Costco, who's not even Sandpoint. And I think the mask issue, which is more harmful to you to have it on, if you go work and you try to breathe, you know, you try to, uh, do your work, I see people at, at Home Depot, I see people at Walmart that have a problem with the mask. The mask is not an issue to make it a mandatory thing. I think we need to look at what is the truth about this whole COVID- we need to look at what is the truth about this whole COVID-19. Even the testing are not 100% true. You can have a false positive. And believe me, I have a brother who's in a nursing facility. He has to be tested. He has never tested with COVID, but there has been false testing on positive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for this comment, Mr. Grafton. All right, anyone else clear?
No one who's already spoken on this matter, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, that concludes.
I have one thing I'd like to ask for this agenda item. I'd like the action item to be removed from it for future meetings. And the reason that I ask is it just resonated to me how emotional and sometimes irrational and reactive and concerning it is to me that we could throw up emotion as great as that on a non-agenda item, something that's been thought out and time spent. So it really exposed me to that tonight and I think it's too critical of a item so we can remove the action item off of the COVID update, please.
Is there a second? Second. Andy, is that, I mean, would that be considered?
I don't know if it would.
Potential COVID action item. I'm point of order here. Help me out, attorney.
There was no action taken. So I think we have listed in the past potential action items on certain topics and not taken any action on them. I don't think you have a necessity of removing it from the agenda. You have, you have, you know, a record of the proceedings. There was a motion made but was not seconded and went no further than that. I don't think you need to do that.
Okay.
It's a request of the mayor that future agendas, it's not listed as an action item.
Is that, I'm sorry, maybe I'm not understanding your.
I'm asking that it's not, that the COVID update is not listed as an action item for future agendas.
Okay, I understand. I'm sorry. I misinterpreted your comments. So the COVID update would be just a staff report. If there's going to be a motion in the future, it would be listed as an action item. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Or agendized.
I think that's appropriate.
So, I mean, that's councilman's suggestion. Does that require council action in order to restrict that agenda item in the future?
No.
Okay.
But in the future, if there's going to be, I mean, if we're going to have an action item, it should be listed as such on a particular motion. If councilwoman Raul wants to make that motion, she can do so and that would become an action.
So on this agenda, it's listed as a possible council action. So are you, and what I hear the councilman asking is that we remove that from any future COVID update?
Yeah.
And I guess what the, if there were to be a future council action, that it would be specified what that council action is rather than.
An agenda is.
To separate the two.
That's right.
COVID update, that's a report from Jennifer versus if there's going to be some action item on a particular matter, that would be listed as an action item on the agenda. I think that's appropriate in the circumstance.
Okay, okay. I would invite, if any counselors want to, you know, chime in on that, I'd invite your comments this time.
Are we voting on this or is it just?
No, this, but I'm interested to hear. If you want to speak on that, I'm interested to hear.
I think it's appropriate for, you know, if somebody, anybody feels like it's, they need a specific agenda item to speak about this particular issue or anything else, whether it be COVID-related or not, and it would be appropriate to put it on the agenda. And not, so John's just saying like, so when we get a COVID update, it's not like we're going to have a, you know, three-hour discussion about whether something could or could not happen. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, or be agendized to where the public knows that we could be potentially having a motion on the table about voting on, you know.
Sure.
Adding masks. It can be strategized that way and it's just not the way that such emotional decision-making should be made. It needs to be publicly noticed and put on the agenda.
That's important.
Absolutely.
I support that.
All right, anything you want to add, Councilman Greg?
I agree.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to everybody that came out tonight to speak on this issue and I appreciate everybody's thoughts. I just wanted to make everyone aware, I think you all are, that testified after we decided not to take action on this issue. If there's concern at this point in time that we are, I just want you to understand that that's not something we're considering tonight or, you know, I don't think, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of support for it into the future. I'm not going to sit here and guarantee you anything. But it just seemed from my observation that there was still additional concern that we were going to move in that direction tonight. And so just procedurally, earlier on, we decided not to pursue that avenue. And I also have a lot of faith in my fellow counselors that there was a lot of, you know, asking us to do our research. I think I have, I just have a lot of faith that all of our council strives to be as informed as they possibly can. I, myself, I am a scientist. I have a PhD in science with a specialty in viruses. I can assure you that I do a tremendous amount of research. My job is in peer review. So just because I choose to wear a mask doesn't mean I'm buying into some kind of false rhetoric. It's because I have asthma and I want to protect my health and I want to protect my family's health. And so just before, you know, before you judge somebody for making a personal choice, they have reasons to do so. So please just consider that and just respect people's choices. Thanks.
Counsel, anything, anything else? All right, that concludes our COVID-19 update. Next on the agenda is a proposed infiltration and inflow reduction project for lateral replacement. Infrastructure Development Services Manager Amanda Wilson is online to give us a stellar presentation, no doubt. Right, is she there?
I am. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we have Mr. Steve James there with her as well and Brian Card. Hi, guys. All right, Amanda, table's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, so please bear with me one second. Are you able to see it?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. Well, good evening again. Before I begin with the presentation, I would like to just take a moment to introduce the two individuals. Been working very hard on this subject and it will be joined in tonight's discussion. Here's a familiar face, Steve James with J U B Engineers. Steve is our lead advisor and expert on inflow and infiltration. We're grateful for his knowledge on the subject. Also serving as the project manager on our data collection efforts related to this matter and he continues to assist with our wastewater treatment plant and the implementation of that facility plan. Additionally, I'd like to take a moment to introduce Brian Card. He's a new member of the structure and development services team. Brian is a certified project manager professional and he has been assisting us with this project that will become before you this evening. His role is primarily in response to a significant increase that we've had in development. I've seen that and our need to provide really a responsive customer service to those builders and developers. And so I'm confident you'll be aware of how well versed Brian has become on our current challenges with INI in such a relatively short time. So we're really grateful to have him on board. And last but not least, although they're not here tonight, I would be remiss to not mention our crews, our field. They've been instrumental in this proposed project and specifically I'd like to call out Rod Brigitte, Joe Higgins, and as well as Clay Bowman. Our entire team in the field has been really helpful with our commission assessment. These three have really risen to the top with their boots-on-the-ground knowledge and quite frankly, their years of experience in the field has been invaluable forward. So again, tonight's evening is inflow and infiltration. We're going to take a bit of a deep dive into the subject matter. It's a significant and complex decision. The agenda item is we're requesting council consider authorizing staff to move forward with developing a bid package to do an improvement project, specifically a sewer lateral improvement project. And we'll talk more about what we mean by laterals and the specifics of the improvement project. It is a complex matter. As I mentioned, we could talk for hours about this subject. We can really take a deep into the details. We're not going to do that. We've tried our best to balance how much information we're giving you. It is a 20-minute presentation. I just want to fair warn you right out of the gate, but I think you'll find the information informative if you move forward with your decision-making. To that end, our agenda, it seems appropriate to start off with just a very brief update on our wastewater treatment plant and the previous commitments made in moving that project forward and the schedule. Then we'll really go through the inflow and infiltration update itself and I'll see the agenda there. We'll go into some of the data that has fostered this proposal to you and really in support of the strategic plan that city council adopted for data-based decision-making. So that's fundamentally why we're here tonight. So with that, I will pass it over to Brian and he's, go ahead and pick this off here.
Great. Thank you, Amanda, for that introduction. Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public, want to start with this approval plan to talk a little bit about where we've come from and where we're going and why this is an important agenda item for tonight. So as a reminder, our overall goal with the wastewater treatment plan is to have both clean water as well as affordability or viability with that clean water and at the same time keeping the public informed and involved in this process. So the plan that was approved almost two years ago is, has been divided into three phases. So we're in the first phase right now, which is actually the bridge phase. So it's taking us from where we were and it's getting us to where we want to go with our new wastewater treatment facility. And so in this phase, we're doing upgrades to the current plant to upgrade key infrastructure there as well as acquire some new technology to help the plant, but also technology that's going to be useful when our new plant is built. So that way we're not having redundancy there. And what this really does is it helps buy us time to continue to aggressively reduce that inflow and infiltration. So when we say inflow, we mean things coming into the sanitary sewer system that are introduced perhaps inadvertently by homeowners through, and Steve, Steve James will get into this a little bit more, but through things like sump pumps and infiltration, it's really getting into the sanitary sewer system through like cracks. And so that would be groundwater infiltration. Again, Steve James will do a deeper dive on that. So it gives us a chance to reduce that inflow and infiltration in the near term. And if we can aggressively reduce that, then it flows right into the first phase of the project, or I should say phase one of the project, which is to design and build a new wastewater treatment plant that's capable of treating up to six MGD or six million gallons of water per day. And so that is the projected amount that we need to treat sustainably if we aggressively reduce INI. If we're not able to aggressively reduce INI, then that brings us to phase two of the approved plan, which is to increase the size of the already new plant in order to be able to treat 10.7 MGD, which is the projected maximum daily amount during high-influent flows with only moderate INI reduction. So this is, I think, the wet season when we get snow melt, when we get our first rain events and it causes that groundwater to seep into the system. Again, Steve James will do a deeper dive on that in just a moment. All right, so this is why we're here today and why this is important now is that the implementation schedule. So we are currently on time and on track with this schedule, which you'll see that right now we should be starting a rate study. So the results of this project will directly affect the rate study that we're beginning. So it's going to help us choose again, a viable, sustainable rate for the city, but also be fair to those rate payers. The next reason this is timely is if you look down on year three quarter two, that's when we're going to start the kind of contracting and engineering phase of our phase one for design build of that wastewater treatment plant. So the results of this project will directly influence our design of that plant. So this is going to give us an opportunity to make a more informed decision, as Amanda was alluding to, a data-driven decision. And so that's why, that's why this is important. All right. Now we're looking at the INI update. This is going to be data that Steve's going to present you that's been recently collected this year. So I thought it appropriate just to talk very briefly about basins. So we use basins to measure the total volume of water flowing to the wastewater treatment plant. So this, we, you can see the definition of basins there, but one way to think about it might be to think of your sinks in your household or all the drains in your household collecting water. The way we measure the total outflow of water and inflow of water, from outflow from the drains, but inflow to the sewer treatment plant is to measure the water at those basins. So think again, your drains in your house. So if you're trying to identify which drain might have a leaky faucet over it, that's kind of how we're doing this, is we're measuring what those flows are at different times of the year so we can get a good idea of what a normal flow is kind of towards the end of summer when we don't have a lot of groundwater and we don't have as many rain events versus what a high-influent flow might be sometime in January, February. So that's why this is important and these are the basins that we've identified based on our ability to collect data with flow meters. All right. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Steve James and he'll talk about the data collected earlier this year.
Great, thank you, Brian. Mr. Mayor, council members, great to be with you tonight. I want to just walk you through what we've collected so far in our full monitoring for the INI and to talk a little bit about what the implications of that are. If you look at the graph in front of you, that's a summary of all the different basins that we've collected in the city. If you can look at the left side of that, that is early January when we had cold weather, not much precipitation. The flows into the treatment plant were pretty low. In the middle of the chart, that was more mid-January. If you recall, it got warmer. We got a little bit more rain and the flows jumped up. And then the right-hand side is the end of January, early February, when we had a lot of rain on snow and that ended up having a lot of flow that went to treatment plant. What's interesting about this is each of the basins had more or less the same pattern. Next slide, please. So the groundwater level monitoring is something that we did as part of the flow monitoring. We want to get an idea of whether groundwater rose and how that impacted the treatment plant. As you look at this, the fine lines are the actual groundwater monitoring well levels and then the thicker gray line is the treatment plant flow. So as we went from left to right, from drier weather to wetter weather, you can see that a lot of the groundwater monitoring wells rose. We also saw a direct relationship between the groundwater level and the flow into treatment plant. So now we know that both rain and groundwater levels impact flow to the treatment plant. Next slide, please. We've also learned a couple of things. The city has done a lot of work on your public sewer system. You've done a lot of lining. You've done a lot of work to upgrade that and the field crews have done a lot of work to identify where flows might be coming into the sewer system. So we know we've more or less tackled that part of it. That leaves a lot of sources on the private side that are probably impacting the system. We know that on the private side, that's water coming in, like Brian said, from yard drains, from the houses sump pumps. All of that contributes to flows into the treatment plant. All of that contributes to flows into the treatment plant. If you look at the right hand side, you may remember this from the facility plan. We saw quite a bit of flow that came during these peak events. So in an average dry weather day, you maybe have a million gallons a day. But on the peak weather events, it goes all the way up to 10.7. That additional nine million gallons per day looks like 65,000 additional people in standpoint. So the real impact to getting this out is it potentially allows you to reduce the size of your treatment plant. I'm going to hand it over now to Amanda to talk a little bit about options.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it. So options for reducing INI. If you'll recall, the city council adopted our wastewater treatment plant facility plan. That committed us to aggressively attacking INI. To oversimplify our options, we really see it as we have to. We can either continue to invest in the public side and we can, you, we do have a code, SLIP stands for Sewer Lateral Improvement Program that was adopted by council and it has been instrumental in us reducing our INI. We can talk more about that later if you have additional questions. And that really is putting the onus of replacing any failing sewer laterals on private property owners when they go to sell all their property and/or if there's a problem identified or if they apply for a building permit that would trigger that. So that would be option one. Basically, continue what we're doing. Continue to improve our public infrastructure and continue with keeping private lateral replacements on private property owners. Other option would be to consider the city actually investing directly in the public side. We have an obligation to do that regardless of INI. We have failing infrastructure that needs to be replaced as it gets to the end of its useful life. And to consider an investment on the private side as well. How we do that is really complicated and we have been talking about it for some time. And to that end, it's not on the slide, but I think it's worth noting. We've spent a lot of effort looking at these and other successes. Places that have implemented options that have not worked well. And so we really have to look at what's best for our community in this scenario and draw upon, I think, the data we have and the lessons that we have learned to date about our system. We reconvene the previous wastewater treatment plant citizen review team to kind of get feedback from them. I would say overall, there were some concerns about costs and how this plays into the future investment of our wastewater treatment plant. We'll talk a little bit more about that this evening. But I would say overall, there was a general support for the concept of a improvement project on the private side. So what we're going to really dive into this evening is if we're going to do option two, if we're going to consider doing something different than we've been doing to follow through with our commitment for aggressively attacking INI, it's how do we do that? When do we do it? What are the costs debated with that? How do we implement the costs in a fair manner? And what are our other options for funding? So there's a lot of questions there that need to be answered and you know that those are questions you're going to want information on and that you've also been considering as we've talked about INI in the past. So the short of it is, is we don't have an answer at this point to all of those questions. A one size fits all. But what we're proposing this evening is a is an effort to be able to answer those questions while replacing failing infrastructure. And so that's called the basin improvement project. And our field staff have identified, as previously mentioned, really what basin in our system is failing significantly despite that we've done so much of option number one up on the screen. And so that's the one that we focused on and we are going to, I'm going to pass this to Brian real quick to talk more about the proposed project in front of you this evening.
Great. Thanks, Amanda. So as Amanda said, we've done a lot on the public side for the public infrastructure. And city crews noticed one in particular, really this is a sub-basin. One particular sub-basin, despite all the repairs that we've done on the public side, still was having high volumes of water flowing to the wastewater treatment plant. And so we use that information to select this sub-basin for this possible project. And based on recent data collection, in fact, collection of data just back in June, using a camera crew to go through and actually look at the private sewer laterals. So these are your individual connections from the home into the sewer mains, into the city public sewer mains. We noticed a significant, significant INI. And so if you look at the picture, the image there, on the left hand side, you'll see kind of a stick entering, it looks like a pipe. That's the kind of the feeler boom on the front of the camera that's about to do an inspection of that sewer lateral. But what you can see on the right hand side is where the connection of that lateral meets the main. And the kind of glistening that you see on the far right, that's water infiltrating. You can see that there's not a lot of water coming down that particular lateral at this moment. But there's a lot of infiltration from groundwater that you saw on the previous slides, the high level of groundwater that we had. That's infiltrating through the seam between these two pipes. All right. So this project is going to go and propose to replace or repair the majority of the laterals in this district. And so, or this sub-basin. And so what, what you can see here is that 106 of the 128 laterals that we inspected were failing. Now, this is higher than we expected to see. But again, it's indicative of the high flows that we're seeing coming out of this particular sub-basin. So what we noticed when we, when we went through is that most of the material, 89 of the laterals is older material, probably about 50 years old or so. It's clay and cast iron. There'll be a chart in a moment that has a complete breakdown of this. Those were kind of expected to be in a failing state. We just didn't realize we're going to have this many of them. Some of the pipes that are newer, some of them are made of PVC, they're also failing, but it's a much lower percentage. And so we'll see that. But the bottom line here is all of these failing laterals are contributing to inflow and infiltration, which is overall increasing the volume of water that we're seeing at the wastewater treatment plant. So again, this project proposes to replace or repair the majority of these failing laterals. We want to then, starting in January of 2021, conduct flow monitoring to verify the effectiveness of these lateral repairs. And then either way, we're certain to reduce some of that inflow and infiltration. But with the data collected, we'll be able to tell how much quantify how much total water volume that we reduced. And then depending, and well, based on that information, we'll be able to make a much better informed decision on what we should choose as our citywide approach. And so the last bullet there, you know, is the bang with the buck. Is this going to be a viable method moving forward? So with that, I'll hand it back over to Steve James to talk a little bit more of the specifics of the project that we're proposing.
Great. Thanks, Brian. So the two basins you're looking at, the one on the left is what we call our improvement basin. That was one of the ones that was identified that had a lot of flow and it's, it includes Marion and Lavina and Florence. There's quite a bit of water that comes out of that one. On the right, we found a similar sized basin that would be the control basin, the one we don't do much with. So we make sure that we know whether we did anything or not on the improvement basin. And that control basin includes Lake Michigan and Superior. They're both about the same size. They're both manageable and we know they both have a lot of water. Could you go to the next slide? So this image shows a lot about what that water looks like. When we monitored flows this spring, we looked at the amount of rain that went from land on the ground and turned, ended up in the sewer system. On the right hand side, the highlighted area are both our improvement basin on the left and our control basin on the right. What those show is about 50% of the rain that fell on the ground actually ended up in the sewer. And that's a lot. It's not that much more though than you see in the rest of the system. The bars that are in the shaded area are the major basins. Even though they're a little bit less, you can see they're very similar to what we're seeing here. Next slide, please. And then this, this slide just basically shows the number of laterals that we're looking at. As Brian said, the majority of the lines in the improvement basin are clay, but we have a lot of plastic lines that also need to be replaced. Generally, the newer they are, the more solid they are. In this case, you've got a lot that need to have some work on them. I think what's interesting about these is that's really representative for your entire system. You've got a wide variety wherever you go. And they, as we look at them, of the 128, 106 don't meet the standard. Now that's both the national standard and doesn't meet your SLIP criteria. Next slide, please.
Hey Steve, I have a question.
Yeah.
Of those newer PVC pipes or laterals that have been installed, you know, more recently. To, I mean, it's a little bit surprising to me that a number of those would be failing. Is that, was that just for, you know, poor construction or, you know, what can you attribute that to?
Yeah. Poor construction is a lot of it. A lot, even though you have good materials, if you don't put it in the right bedding and they don't install them right, you'll end up with leakage and that's what we're trying to avoid here. Good question. So the next slide, I think this shows a couple of great images of typically what we saw. On the left, we saw an offset joint. And in that case, the sewer lateral has slipped away from the T that connects it to the main line. If you can see, there's an arc. Amanda, can you show with your mouse that arc? Yeah. If you can see the mouse up there, there's what looks like gravel or dirt and that's exactly what it is. You've got the material in the ground out there. So when that groundwater comes up, if you recall, we saw it really rise during peak events, that water just flows right into that offset joint. The picture on the right is a cracked pipe. A lot of the clay does this. You've got lots of longitudinal cracks and that gives you a great spot for water to flow into the pipe. In, in this case, this pipe is what we call oval and so it's not round anymore. And water will flow in those areas pretty quickly. Next slide, please. Amanda, can you go up to the from current slide in the upper left hand corner to run, run these videos?
I think I can hit blank here.
Oh, there you go. That'll work. Yes. So these are examples of what we actually saw. And recall, this is in June when flows weren't very high. And we ended up with a lot of groundwater coming in. So this is just what the camera saw in a number of places. That trickle is a lot of water and in the spring it'd be a lot more. On the right hand side, that shows a root coming in through joints. And roots love sewers because they can get water, trees like that. What really happens here is the water will follow that root into the sewer system. So you get a lot of infiltration. Roots are bad. Obviously leaks are bad. And I think one of the key things here is as we take care of the main lines, we're finding that the water is sneaking into the laterals too. So as we solve one problem, we're getting another one taken care of. And I'll hand it over here to Amanda.
Thank you. We'll talk a little bit more about it later. This project is scalable. And so what we're proposing this evening to council is we spent a lot of time as staff and with Steve as our, and the subject expert and advisor on this as well, looking at how should we approach this project? And we're requesting that we are all, that we go in and we fix everything that we can so that when we're collecting data, we have a higher level of confidence on those flow results. Because if we do a partial project in this case, our concern is that going forward, when we're coming to you for a broader citywide decision and conversation, there may be questions about how we approach this project and the validity of the data. And so that's why this evening we're suggesting that we approach it as all of the failing laterals. To that end, it's possible we may not be able to actually replace all 106 of those failing laterals within this relatively aggressive timeframe that you'll, you see on the schedule in front of you. Can you see the next slide?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to see. Can you tell us what that, what that schedule is, Amanda?
Absolutely. Am I able to zoom in? I'll probably mess it up after this, so I apologize. Is that any better?
Zoomed in on your slides on the left.
It's hard, what I see is different than what you see, so.
And Amanda, the zoom should be in the lower right hand corner of that page.
Is the schedule on?
That's a little better, but it's still really small perspective. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry. So depending on your decision this evening, we would begin a more aggressive public engagement effort, particularly in this basin. To date, the homeowners are, have not been adequately notified of this project. And so we get your decision this evening, we have put that on hold. So that would be one of our very first actions and that really would continue throughout the project. We've talked to you in the past about public engagement and informing them, that's critical, especially to this replacement project. The next would be, we need to do a thorough and complete legal evaluation. And our legal team is on board to help us with any agreements that we'll have in place with the private property owners to come in and do this work. We would also develop the contract documents for the construction contract. The bidding and the review of those bids. So in theory, we would go out to bid in early September. And, or that's not in theory, what's being proposed in the schedule would be early September and then come to you for your decision to potentially award a contract at the October city council meeting. And then immediately begin work and get the failing laterals replaced before the end of this year with the intent of being able to install the flow monitoring devices in January of 2021 and monitoring them through the winter. That's, that's the high level of the schedule as far as the costs that are presented in front of you. The construction value, it does have contingencies in it. It also, it's, it's a pretty, at this point, it's estimated because we don't have our complete package put together. And like any of our capital improvement projects, as we continue to move forward, we anticipate contingencies will go down. So this would be truly an all in cost. Design, construction bid documents, support for that, contract administration and then the flow monitoring that would happen when this is all done, as we've discussed, brings the total to $1.7 million. We do have a note on here, estimated savings due to city staff leading the effort. Historically, we've consulted out and often even to J U B, who has done a wonderful job for us, I think. Our contract admin for managing the construction elements as well as the bid documents and that process. And the city staff would be taking the lead on that, which is estimated to be about a $270,000 savings on this project alone. I'm going to go through a couple more slides here and then we will look forward to opening it up to your thoughts and questions and discussion. So I'd like to talk a little bit, and I'm going to zoom back out. So this slide can read it as well. About pros and cons and just circling back to this broader picture. Again, we have a couple of options. We can invest. And in here, you have three options in front of you instead of two. They're similar. Two and three are similar. So invest in the public infrastructure only. If your decision is that it's, it's not our role at this point to invest in private sewer laterals as a way to attack INI, I think, you know, I've considered and discussed with the citizen review team as well is that it's a short term, lower cost. Politically and strategically, it's, it's easier. You know, if we're not doing work on private property, that is certainly easier than taking on a project on someone else's property. The cons are a slower replacement of laterals. So to date, just less than about 30% of our, and Steve, correct me if I get these numbers wrong, please. Of about 3,800 sewer laterals in the entire town. Through our sewer lateral improvement program that we have in city code that I mentioned to you earlier, just 30% of those. that I mentioned to you earlier, just 30% of those that require repair have been repaired. The, so in other words, it takes longer. It would take years and years for homes to sell and building permits in the basin that we're talking to you about for the failing laterals to eventually be replaced. So that is a potential con. We know we have these and delaying that has consequences.
Amanda, can I stop you for a second? I just have a question. Are you saying that since we've initiated the slip program that we've replaced over 1,000 laterals?
No, I'm saying that we have of the laterals that have been triggered for replacement, we have replaced about 30% of those.
Okay, okay.
Steve, do you want to phrase that any different?
140 range?
Yeah, I want to, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I believe that there have been about 800 that have been inspected. And Amanda's right, about 30% of those have been, so 800 been inspected, 30% of the ones have been identified and that's roughly a third of the ones have been identified. So like a third of 200, maybe somewhere between 50 and 100, I think have been replaced.
Okay, thank you. That's right.
That's correct, absolutely. Thank you, that's a good point. The other con is that it ignores failing infrastructure. So, you know, it's an additional cost in that essence to ratepayers. Two would be the other option, which is what we've talked about a little bit is, well, what happens if we just decided we were going to invest in private laterals without doing a basin project and really look at rolling this into a comprehensive citywide? Is this the right approach? And the reason that we're proposing to you a smaller project before we're coming to you with a request for a citywide investment in this regard is because as Steve has been saying, since I started with the city and it's, I think now I completely understand, is that we don't, we cannot give a level of confidence of how effective that would be on a citywide approach right now. We have tried and we want Steve to give us the answer to that and we're just not able to. We don't have the data. And so the pros potentially of just saying, we're not going to do this basin basin project to validate our data. Instead, we're just going to go forward. We would accelerate replacement of laterals that would otherwise be required by code and would take more to do. We would be doing something tangible. So despite INI or regardless of INI, the laterals are failing. That clay pipe, the roots, et cetera. Maybe many people, you know, listening to us talk about this tonight have had to replace your own sewer lateral and, you know, the system at some point stops working, fails. So my point is they eventually need replaced regardless of our treatment plant, regardless of the INI issues. So we're doing something tangible. We're investing in failing infrastructure. The con is investing potentially, we estimate $15 to $20 million without being able to give you a high level of confidence and/or the supporting data on the effectiveness of it. So on the right hand side, you see option number one, what is the probability of reducing flows in the short term? It's pretty low if we just keep our slip program. Option number two, what is the probability of reducing flows in the short term? We don't know. Option number three, basin projects that we're proposing for you this evening. And that's where we feel when this is over, we will be in a better position to answer the broader question of what if we do this throughout the entire town? And so the pros there is increasing our confidence, also increasing how much will this really cost? We'll have actual bid numbers instead of our estimates. Again, doing something tangible and investing in failing infrastructure. The cons, I'm sure many of you have already been thinking about and I've had discussions with some in the past about it as well. It may prove to not be as effective as we believe it will be. So that is one potential con. We will learn from the data collection and we know without a doubt reduce INI. We just don't know how much. There is a perceived fairness issue and I realize that's a very, very challenging conversation, which is why we're not ready to give you a recommendation on a citywide perspective because that takes a much more thorough evaluation regarding fairness. In this case, we would be replacing roughly 100 homeowners sewer lateral. And as we just discussed, many, many homeowners in this town have already, at their own costs, paid for their sewer lateral. And after this project and throughout this project, other homeowners will be doing the same. So the third bullet we noted is that there may be a perceived precedence going forward. But if we do this with this basin, that it may be something that we now have to do or feel we have to do for the rest of the community. So tonight, our requested action by council, I'll state it, is we are requesting your to move forward with hitting the bids and bringing those to you in October for your final decision and the legal review and answering some of those questions that go with it. You have a lot of options here. I mean, you do with no matter what the subject is that we bring to you. And I know you're well aware of the various options, but I wanted to just mention a couple here because I think we've talked about a lot of different things. Obviously, there's the staff recommendation. The second bullet there is it is a scalable project. We, if you're uncomfortable spending the amount that we anticipate to be our not to exceed amount, we could replace a portion of it, albeit that will be different data than if we replace the entire basin. Project, delaying the project does have consequences. As Brian mentioned, our overall reason for trying to get this done now is to better inform our future rate study and to better inform our engineering that is about to come upon us very soon as far as what size that wastewater treatment plant needs to be. We can have a conversation about alternative funding strategies. Should these, you know, 106 homes contribute to the project? And then obviously, I know you probably have a lot of other thoughts and may have a different direction you want to go with staff. But I just wanted to lay out some of the things that cross through our minds as we were bringing forward the recommendation to you this evening. And with that, thank you for staying with us for this presentation and we'll open it up for any questions.
I'll start with a few. So which basin would you, what's the name of the basin that you would recommend doing this with? Is it the, is it the Ella or the Boyer? Which one is it? I can't see it, so.
The sub portion of the Boyer Basin.
The sub portion of the Boyer Basin. So with what degree of confidence can we assume that whatever data we get from say improvements on that, on that basin, that that will extrapolate to the other basins?
Steve, I'm going to tag you for that question.
Yeah, it's a great question. And I'll be honest, we don't know exactly. But what we do know from talking to Field crews is the laterals are pretty consistent throughout town. The most, the largest contributors tend to be the Boyer Basin, the Upper Ella and Lower Ella Basin, so kind of through the middle of town. And they tend to be the older parts of town with lots of old clay pipes, clay laterals. And so we think that what we're seeing here will be pretty consistent. I will say that this basin appears to be worse in terms of the number of clay laterals than other ones. But I still think it's representative.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a question. I appreciate your presentation, but I just wanted to make a comment that I think that this would be a very wise financial investment. I understand that there can be some perceived, you know, equity issues by a series of folks getting their laterals replaced in the future. Like, why didn't I get my lateral replaced? But I think that this pilot project or demonstration project could is eventually going to benefit everybody because we're really, what it really comes down to is do we build a 6 million gallon plant or an 11 million gallon plant?
And that. 80 million, right?
That's a huge cost difference right there. And so everyone's rates are going to be dramatically different if we have to build an 11 million gallon plant. And so while you may not have your lateral replaced and that, and there's probably going to be a handful of people that scream about it, your rates are going to be, if, and I think this is a really well thought out plan. They've done a lot of work to get to where we are in this. And we agreed as a council to be really aggressive on INI for the explicit purpose of trying to build a smaller plant and keep those rates as low as possible. We're already going to have to increase them. It's a foregone conclusion, you know, we, it's going to happen. But do we increase them by, there's a, you know, multimillion dollar difference in that, in that plant construction? So if we can determine that, you know, aggressive lateral repair in the residential section is worthwhile, then we have another problem to tackle in the future of like how we achieve repair across the board. But we'll gain a lot of insight, I think, from doing this project.
And what is the difference approximately between the two different options and plans?
Steve would be able to tell you.
Just remember 80 million.
Big numbers.
The number for the six MGD plant was about 20 to 25 million dollars less than that.
Okay. So we even save a little bit of money with the citywide lateral replacement program?
Well, it depends on the results. We, again, we learned a lot more through this.
Okay.
And I guess if I may chime in, Mr. Mayor, our intent is once, we really didn't get past one after we collect the data. So when we, if you decide to move forward with this project and we do replace the laterals as many as we possibly can in this area, we collect the data. Our intent is obviously to bring that data back to you with a strategy for a citywide approach and us really take a deep dive into the numbers about how this plays out with the broader project at hand regarding the overall wastewater treatment plant improvements and really take a deeper dive into those costs that all are honing in.
So Andy, I have a question around, you know, liability and equity. Are we, I mean, if we are setting a precedent with this and, you know, there have been countless homeowners that have already replaced their lateral and as Amanda says, others that will even during the duration of this project. Are we opening ourselves up for a claim there? And about, and then going forward, even after completion of this project, are we, you know, are we, are we vulnerable there as well?
Well, I think that's a good question. And preliminarily, Amanda and I had a discussion this afternoon about the expenditure of public monies to replace laterals on private property. And I think we got to flesh that issue out before we would be able to consider that in the long run. We have some ideas on that and we'll have to take a look at that issue. As far as this project goes, I think if we get past that hurdle, I think we could look at this as a pilot project for how to work in the entire city. And even though there may be some inequities, there always are, regardless of what our actions are. I think for the betterment of the entire system and for the reduced cost of operation, which is going to benefit all homeowners and business owners and landowners throughout the city. You know, if you can save $25 million, a lot of money. If we can save that, you know, you probably a good investment. So, but I don't think there's going to be a liability issue, but I do think we need to make sure that we have the basis for making the expenditures on private property using taxpayer funds. So that's the first thing we got to look at. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
I think calling it a pilot project is good, too. Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Did you finish, Steve?
Yeah, I was just saying, I think calling it a pilot project, those words matter, especially in the equity. I mean, I sat here thinking, I just paid $8,000 to have mine replaced, right? And so I'm sure other people are going to think the same thing. But I think if we couch it in, it's a pilot project and the way that we, you know, really give the information like we're very good at to the public and saying, yes, but we're going to be saving $25 million.
Potentially.
Yeah, potentially, right? I think, yeah.
I think we're going to have to do something and spend money to find out what the problem is. This is not a problem that's inherent to the city of Sandpoint. I can assure you of that.
Or unique.
It happens all across the country and municipalities are dealing with it every day. And I think Amanda and the other folks who are working on this have put together a pretty good proposal. You just got to make sure we're not running afoul of any legalities.
Right, right.
And, you know, I think the other key in this too, and that if this pilot project is successful and we are able to bring that, that, you know, the size of the plant down to six, for instance, you know, we're kind of killing two birds with one stone in a sense. Because if we just build a bigger plant, we still have an infrastructure problem. And it's not going away, right? And so, you know, this way we're improving our infrastructure and we're getting the plant. And then we have the capacity for future expansion, right? Because our six MGD is still expandable at any point in the future, 20 or 40 years down the road. We can go to eight or 10 or whatever. Amanda, did you, you wanted to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Andy handled what my concern or thought was.
Okay.
Now, I think one other point to make too is if you, and I'm sure we will consider other sources of funding at some point in time. If you don't have the information and the data available to prove that your proposal for this alternative funding is good or valid or viable, you're not going to be able to, you know, look into the sources of funding in, you know, from the get go. So it may be money that's well spent at this point in time. You just got to make sure we're doing the right thing, I guess, is the bottom line.
As well as save with Amanda saying that $270,000 is going to be in-house with city staff. I mean, that right there, again, with being new here, like you guys are so valuable to all of us. And that, that also needs to get out to the public, like how important the decisions of bringing really good qualified staff on to help with this rather than it always being subcontracted out. So great, great proposal. Thank you very much.
So who's taking a pay cut on that?
Dan.
Appreciate you. Anything else from council? Any other questions? No? Anything else, team? All right, thank you for that presentation. That was great. Is there anyone in the public or online that would like to comment on this issue?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seeing none. Let's see. I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed basin improvement project. Specifically authorizing staff to proceed with developing construction bid documents and negotiating amendment number four with J U B engineers for professional services to support this project. Is there a motion?
Same.
The moved and seconded, is there any discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. The last item on our old business is a proposed resolution for Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation Grant Agreement for War Memorial Field Boat Launch Improvements. Does council have any questions? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. They've lost interest in us at this point, sorry. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution for Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation Grant Agreement for War Memorial Field Boat Launch Improvements.
Same. Second.
The moved and seconded, is there any discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes. Only all agenda items went that quickly. Next item, the last item actually on the agenda this evening is adoption of the maximum preliminary budget for fiscal year 2021. Declaration of Intent to Reserve with caring. Finance Director Sarah Lenz and City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will provide a presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, to emphasize for the council, what the action before you tonight is to adopt a maximum budget ceiling for next year. So we've had years where we have the full budget document coming in at the time that we're doing this. But then subsequently, we do budget workshops. We've also had years where you have your maximum amount. We're finalizing the budget document shortly thereafter and we continue forward with the budget workshops. So for the public that may still be with us and watching this tonight, this is a maximum budget amount. So as we move forward with our budget workshops over our next couple of meetings. So as we move forward with our budget workshops over our next couple of meetings, that's where we'll do a deep dive and get into discussions about aspects of the budget. You can get down to much more detail and we're going to talk about that in a minute. And then in addition to adopting the maximum budget, then you would be setting this for a public hearing at the August 19th.
Yes, August 19th.
I've looked at a lot of numbers today, so I can't trust myself with numbers anymore. So some of the reason for not having our budget, full detailed budget document up at the same time with this tonight is we've just got a few moving parts that, that we're trying to land and you have a significantly different budget document that you are going to see this year, which is going to provide much more detail, it's much more visually appealing. I think it will be easier for the council and the public and Sarah's going to, going to walk you through a little bit of that here in a minute. But projects like this, this last project, the INI project, that was one piece. It was, are we including that in the budget and with what funds? So, and CARES Act funding, we're a little bit back and forth with exactly how that rolls out, but otherwise, again, it's, it's a maximum budget amount. The proposed budget amount is $34,601,714, which as noted in our staff report, is a decrease of just over 4.7 million from what our budget was, our adopted budget for this fiscal year. So just under a 12% reduction from this year's budget. The decrease in the overall budget, and there's been much debate over the last several years because we saw Sandpoint's budget, City of Sandpoint's budget increased pretty dramatically over several year period and we saw this kind of peak and now we're kind of seeing a sunset over the peak. And so that the public understands this, again, much of that peak was related to our local option sales tax, our 1% tax, which sunsets December 31st of this year. So in next year's budget, there is three months of revenue accounted for that where on the last almost five years now that we've had this, we've seen a full 12 months budgeted for that local option tax. In addition to that, we don't have a downtown revitalization project budgeted in the budget and we've had it for many years and then we would have it and then it got delayed, so we're carrying it over. And so we've also had several years of that occurring with the downtown revitalization project. So phase two is completed and we have no budget for downtown revitalization in next year's budget. There will be, we anticipate a phase three for downtown revitalization, but we are taking a year off next year and going to be looking at what it looks like with revenues coming in and you'll see that probably come back for the subsequent budget year for engineering and then construction likely the year after that. So we're three years out probably from a phase three. And again, that impacts the overall amount that is in our budget. In addition, the budgeted costs for sewer treatment plant upgrades are lower this year than what they have been over the last couple of years. We had a larger amount in there while we were kind of figuring out what those bridge upgrades were needed until we moved to the replacement of the sewer plant. And again, the bridge upgrades were less, a much lower cost than what we had originally anticipated that those would need to be. So those are really the big factors that, that result in the reduction of the budget. Oftentimes there's-
I'm sorry, the bridge upgrades?
To the sewer treatment plant.
Oh, right, right, thanks.
Yes.
Yeah, the bridge.
Yeah, not a bridge.
Yeah.
Bridge upgrades to a new fence.
We built a bridge.
So again, oftentimes this gets misconstrued because when someone just looks at a government budget and you see the big increase, at first reaction is this must be property taxes. And actually, when you're seeing these big swings in budgets, it's usually due to capital projects and it's usually due to leveraging outside dollars. So either grant dollars or in our case, the local option tax and SARA funding. So just want to make sure everyone understands again what we're seeing with that swing. We have scheduled for budget workshops, two upcoming workshops. So, and I warned council about this, that we were looking at extra meetings this summer. So our first budget workshop would be scheduled for next week, next Wednesday, and we would be, we will be talking about performance measures, staffing and MNO and kind of doing a deep dive discussion into that. The second budget workshop is scheduled for July 29th and in that budget workshop, we're specifically going to be talking about master planning efforts, where we are, what carries over into next fiscal year, and then our capital improvement projects, which are primarily out of our master planning efforts that have occurred over the last 12 to 18 months. So, and if we need to, we can carry over budget discussions then to the first council meeting in August before the public hearing at the second council meeting. But we typically have been able to get through our budget workshops over two meetings. We also felt it would be more productive to do those as special meetings specifically focused on the budget. So for the public, when we are doing those budget workshop meetings, we're typically not doing public forum and the other items that go along with it. It is a very dedicated discussion where we're just into the business of our budgets. So that would be the next two weeks and then we'd be to our regular format that the public is more familiar with for our regular, first regular meeting in August.
So when was the first one?
First budget workshop is next Wednesday, the 22nd.
22nd, the second one's the 29th.
Second one's the 29th.
Same time, same place?
Yes, 5:30 here specifically focused on budget. We will have our budget document posted on Friday of this week and we are entirely electronic this year. So we have talked over the last several years about how our budget document, we were making improvements and it was a work in progress. This year, we're landing to what that, that final progress is, what that document looks like. So it is entirely electronic. For people who have used our financial transparency portal online, so our OpenGov where you can deep dive into our expenditures and things, we've used that platform to create our budget document this year. So as Sarah's going to kind of give you a walkthrough on some of the key components, what you're familiar with, where are elements that are new, and also show you where you can go into the budget document in areas and you can click on it and you can dive to the next level. So if you want to look at things, which is something we traditionally have not had in our budgets, so you've not been able to really get to that next level easily, either the council or the public. So, and we're really proud about what this budget document looks like. We followed best practices, we looked at award-winning budget designs, performance budget designs across the country and really I have to hand it to Sarah, really took a lock, a look at what the winners were, what the components should be, what this should look like. And so we modeled after those best practices with developing this budget document and really Sarah, working with our staff across the city, I think has put together a really good budget for us this year and a really good template model. And Mary Malone's worked as well pretty closely on this, so we're not blinded by all the numbers and the tables and the graphs, but we got some lovely pictures of Sandpoint. And also when we're talking about projects, you can see where the project is, so we can orient ourselves with, with where those things are. So with that, why don't you give us a test drive?
Why is it not as, other way big? Or is that how it's supposed to look? Up there? What? It's big, or is that how it's supposed to look? Okay. All right. So as Jennifer had mentioned, we have this in OpenGov, which is, it's all done in stories in here and it's super interactive and it's very fun. So, so this is the landing page and in the landing page here, you have a table of contents down here. Over on the left-hand side, you have basically the introductory, that's what you were normally used to see in the very beginning, probably 10 pages in there. Then you have in budget and brief, you've got a citywide and I'll kind of, I'll click into these, I'll just do a quick overview and then click into them, not all of them, right? Then you've got, the citywide is like a basic high level, just the current year budget. Then you get the historical and, and revenues and expenditures and that's going to be what you're normally used to seeing, the, the last fiscal year and, and the proposed budget and then also the two prior year of actuals is in there. And then our property taxes and again, all of those are what you're used to seeing. I'm going to click in this capital improvement lump because this is a really cool, separate actual story that we've done, that is the actual capital improvement plan. And this one here, how all of these are, they will link you through things. So this one here, for example, is going to be all the capital improvements and projects that we have for the year. So this one here, what she was talking about, you can click into it. This one is just, there isn't anything more, it is just that project itself. But this is what it allows you to do, is you can drill down into things.
And that's the project, actually, they were talking about tonight?
Yep. Okay, so I'm going to go to the actual capital improvement. So in here, we actually broken it out into four different areas, or five different areas, sorry, the streets and right-of-way's, infrastructure, information technology, facility, buildings and land, and then vehicles, machinery and equipment. I'll just click on infrastructure. Inside of that, you're going to see all our infrastructure projects. So then you're able to then click in and actually see, I'm going to pick the fiber background and underground utility project. In here gives a script, we'll, we'll have a description, we're ready, in there.
That's my project, so.
But then down below here then actually shows the projected costs, so they got the budget clicking over it like this, you can, you can see what is making this up. You can see that this is going to be capital and then also purchase professional technologies services. So the underground of the utilities, for example, is, is actually a purchase service, not a capitalized, but as part of the capital project. And then down below, you can see the expenses again in just a table form, format, so the number is actually like that. And then, and again here, this is where you're able to double-click in here and get salaries is a good one, but you're like under medical benefits, you can actually open that up and then see what, what those are to the, actually drill down to what you want to see. And this is all, again, uploaded from our actual stuff that's all tied to our transparency page, that is the financial transparency that we launched back, let's see, a year ago now, or actually?
I think we're three years in.
Yep. So that's, that's the CIP page, it's, all of them are in there. And you have the same up here of all the different projects here. I'm going to back to the regular budget book there, because that's its own standalone thing. We also have a grants tab, performance metrics, our master plans and then summary. This is what you're used to seeing for the estimated beginning fund balance as of, so as of 10-1, I projected what I believe our fund balances will be. And then this is taking in the revenues that we will receive, our expenditures, we will, in the, in this budget, all transfers in and out of different funds to become to our ending estimated fund balance as of the end of next fiscal year. This one's a super important one, I, I like, because it just tells you the story of, like for example, on the waste, the INI reserves, the one that we were just talking about last a little bit ago, we have a beginning of 1.8 or 1.9 million beginning fund balance there, a projected revenue of 620, there is that project of 1.9 that's in there. So if, and then payment, we also make payments, transfers for bond payments out of that fund, leaving 316,000 left in the INI fund. If you approve that product, or that's what we expect.
Just because you brought that up, I thought that was a proposed 1.7.
We have 1.9 because that doesn't include all the costs to it, that's just the construction. And Amanda would be able to talk to that more.
Okay.
We always usually also budget a little bit more than what that projected cost is, overages and stuff.
AIPP, we pay out of that, too.
Yeah. Okay, so go back over here to the, the middle here, the budget details. We got major funds, so there is a description here, just kind of explaining what our major funds are in words. Then going back here, when you actually click on, I'm going to click on general fund, show you one of those. So in here kind of does a purpose of the fund, what is, what is this fund, what are the services provided by the fund? And then down here actually has a bunch of the revenues, the different sources of revenues in a table and then also in the table here. And again, this is where you can drill down and actually see the different types of property taxes compared to prior years as well, so you can get that trending. I'm going to click on this one. This actually brings you into, that one there actually brings you into pretty much the same thing. So they, to me, drilling down in the tables is kind of, I think, easier because you actually have the numbers versus pulling you out to a new story over here. That would just be my suggestion when you're looking at it. Some of these down, because it opens, another thing I've noticed that it does open a new tab for you, so you'll end up with a lot of tabs. Okay, so then down here, so this will have like the revenues for the fund, the breakdown and then also we'll have the appropriations. So that's going to be the different types of what, this one, for example, is going to be different service areas that we have within the general fund. So if you wanted to dig into what the general government amount in the general fund is, you could just click on that and you'll see you have the elected offices, central admin divisions and infrastructure and development are within that general government, parts of it. So let's say you wanted to dig into central, then you can actually see what is part of that central. You've got IT and legal and finance and that's where you can start drilling down into. And again, I'll, let's see, on that, and then you can see us government projects. I can, this is how you click a little black, a back button to get to the, the previous one, I would have to try to find it because it's kind of hidden up there, but that's it. And then, then, and then again, you can drill down into that like that, so that's central services budget for the current year. And then it goes down to appropriations by type, it's set up the same way, we have a graph, you can drill down into it and the same things, this is going to be by salaries and employee benefits, all the different types of expenses. Then I've then at the very bottom for the fund summaries, I've done a, a revenue and expenses and, and if it's budgeted right, it should come to zero. So you can see that there, that that fund is unbalanced. So all the major funds are set up that way and the non-major funds as well are all set up in that, that same manner. Down under the budget units, that is, you are used to in the prior year, seeing this, this summary. By state law, we have to have this type of, the way this is published, we have to have the lines like this for each different fund. So this is the summary that you're used to seeing in the past. And so this one to me is a good, I think, to take this and then you can dive into, I actually have this one printed, so I can actually kind of go through and check and go through, but this one to me is kind of the, the summarized, the 10-page summarized budget.
It gives you a really good high-level overview and if you're wanting to compare with previous years. So this is what we typically talked off for much of our budget workshops, but what you have not had easily at your hands, I think that's the difference with the document this year, is we would often get into discussions about those and you would say, well, why do we have a difference in salaries and wages from this year to the next year? And then we're flipping through the document, trying to find the answer, where here you would be able to go to that particular section, go in there, click down and see what exactly is included and you can see that compared, that detail compared with prior years.
Yes. And that, all this is police for, as, as a, like that. And now that all this is police for as a, like that. You can actually see out there. So you can actually see, I can easily toggle over and saying that my salaries and wages are 1.6 from last year. This year, they're 1.7. So it's easy to, and then you can double click in and again and draw all the way down. And so all the different service areas are set up like that. They're going to have, they're going to start with the we are, we do. And then they have a budget discussion, not if, if there's major differences. A lot of them, especially the general fund, didn't change a whole lot. So you're not going to have a lot of budget discussion besides they can drill them down into it. Then it's going to have your, your rep or your actual, the budget, again, the graphical. And then the, and in here, you again, can click on any of those. And then you have your expenditure trending in each one of your service areas. And then you also then have it, your budget by object with a table. And then by fund. So when some of these, for, oh, this is a good example, is at least we have in our special revenue fund, which would be our capital project fund, they do have budgets in that and also in general funds. So you can see what funds are making up their budget. So that's pretty much all that budget units are all set up in that same way. I'm not going to click in anymore. Over here on the appendixes, we have our financial policies, they're what we've always had in there. Our actual transfer schedule, we've never, I don't believe have this in our budget book before. But I think it's super important and I think that it, to start, I think it's the next level of discussions and in detail of what this is. And I don't think we've had those types of discussions yet of what they are. These are basically cost allocations that are going back and forth between funds to pay for finance, doing the sewer, the sewer fund work. So it's, it's, these are going in and on again, those ones should go to zero if you have a transfer in and out. The debt service schedule, this too, we haven't in the past had this. This is just what we owe and in the, currently, and then also in the future years. And done by governmental debt, enterprise debt, fiduciary debt. So that, we don't have a whole lot of debt right now, so it's pretty straightforward and pretty simple. Transparency, that is linked to our financial transparency page out there.
So this is what's on our website, you can get into anytime and you can look at how we're spending our dollars.
So.
Awesome.
And then we have personnel allocations by FTE, so what you're used to seeing the schedule. Please, you're here. And then a glossary of common terms, accounting terms. So just in case you run across any that I don't know what the word means. I'm going to open up the citywide over here. This is the last one I wanted to show. This one is going to be again, the revenues with the table and graph. And then also the citywide, so this is going to be all of the, all of the funds and it's all the revenues in the, broken down by the fund. So that's how you kind of read up at the top of what, how it's doing it. So in here, for example, is going to be our general fund. Our special revenue funds are all listed out like that. Then we have enterprise and fiduciary funds. And our budget and brief are expenses, a graph in our table for the expense side. And again, this is just the next year's budget. The history, the historical will have all the four years. Again, the same thing, expenses now broken down by the different types of fund. And then your graphical, like drill down into and click. And then all revenues by type. So it's going to be across all the different funds. Again, so for example, the property taxes, that's going to be not just general fund property taxes, but also the rec fund property taxes. And then we got a revenues by fund and source. Was not able to get this one in a nice table, I had to create this one. But you are used to seeing this one as well. And this one's super handy because from year to year, this is where, for example, intergovernmental, that's, that was our SURA money. So this SURA money and then also the money we get from the state. Last year, that was $5 million. This year, it's only $2 million. So that's where you can really get a, what, what the changes were, or where the big changes were. That just goes into expenses, same by fund. And then also here's a summary for expenditures by, this is a quick snapshot again to the different, the general, the different types of general government. Then you got your enterprise funds and that and then it's breaking it down by basically salaries, maintenance and operations, capital, debt service and transfers. And this was also something that was, we have in past have done in the budget book. So other than that, there's a lot to click on. And if you have any questions or want to come and meet and I can walk you through things, let me know. Because once you get used to it, it's neat, but it does take a little bit of getting used to.
So. Cool, nice work, Sarah.
Yeah, that's great. Is there any way to check the, to monitor the traffic to see how many users we have watching this?
So yes, OpenGov does track that. And it was interesting, the one that we, we geared things off of a lot was UKIA down in California. And they did this book and they also did a PDF of this. And they could track that, the PDF was only hit four times of the whole entire budget season. And this had, all of it was inside of this. So until you can get numbers and they have all that as an dashboard, I'm sure we'll be looking at that.
But. So for all those people that say, hey, where's our money going? Like, oh, well, here, let me tell you.
Yeah, and they can drill in and, yep.
Great, thank you very, very much.
That's great. Any questions, council? Deb, you doing all right?
Again, just a reminder for council, and this was covered in our, our staff report and we had discussed at a previous council meeting that the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020 does not include our available forgone of $40,754, nor did we include any of a 3% property tax increase as allowed under state statute. And at 3%, that would be $134,593. Council did approve at a previous meeting submission of a letter of intent to participate in the CARES Act program to benefit property taxpayers with this reduction. So we will be submitting the notice of intent this week and we will have updates for council as more information comes out about that program. We have not committed to anything other than a notice of intent. So we'll be discussing that program and the implications specifically as we move through the process and before our hearing at the end of August.
Great. All right, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this issue?
I don't believe we're taking comment on this issue.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. We're going to save that for the public hearing on Wednesday, August 19th. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adopt the maximum preliminary budget for fiscal year 2021, declare the city's intent to reserve the right to recover this year's forgone increase in a subsequent year, and schedule the public hearing on these matters during council's regular meeting on Wednesday, August 19, 2020, 5:30 PM. Is there a motion?
It's moved or seconded.
It moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
I just would like to compliment the staff on a great job and really getting this out there for a better way for the look at it. And.
We can't hear you. I think she's, is that a yes, thumbs up?
Can you hear me now? Thumbs up.
Yes, that's a thumbs up.
That was a yes. Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Motion passes and this meeting is-
Mr. Mayor? We do have, still have some folks online.
You do.
It's possible they may want to speak on the second public forum, I don't know. If there's anybody online who would like to speak during the second public forum session, please raise your hand. We do have a couple.
Okay, appreciate that.
Brendan Wien?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't want to take up too much time. I just wanted to say that this new push for accessibility with budget is, I think it's really cool.
Mr. Wien, we can't hear you, are you there?
I should be.
Problem with her.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Mr. Wien, we're going to check a technical issue, one moment.
Okay.
Mr. Wien, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Take up too much of your time. I just wanted to say that I think this push for accessibility with the budget is really cool and I look forward to taking a look at it. And I just want to thank you all for, this is my first city council meeting that I saw and I thought that it was-
Do you want me to have him try again?
Yeah.
You have to reset it? Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Good night, Aaron.
Good night.
Hello?
Hello, I can hear you.
Okay, so it's just the speaker in the room.
Something's going on with the speaker in the room because they couldn't hear me when I was unmuted. So hang in there for a minute, hopefully we can hear your comments.
No, no problem. Well, if they don't get to it, I just wanted to say, this is my first city council and I think that you guys are doing a great job. And I just think the push for accessibility in the budget is, it looks really great and I look forward to looking at it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Anytime.
It's great to have you. They're usually not this long, although lately they've been long. Are we rebooted yet?